Calling to order the Monday, June 17th, 2024 meeting of the 40th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Patterson, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Black?
Here.
Mayor Protem Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Hennan?
Here.
Councilmember Patterson?
Here.
Councilmember Bellani?
Here.
Mayor Dean?
Here. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin with support from Councilmember Baker. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Patterson, please call the roll.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hennan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Bellani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
I'm going to actually use this mayor-led moment of reflection this evening. I am deeply saddened to share that Gary Polk, longtime Berkeley resident and integral part of our community, passed away this weekend. As the co-founder, vice chair, and most recently the chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Gary's leadership and advice helped shape our leisure services and facilities so that many people of all ages have enjoyed what we offer here in Berkeley. Gary was a thoughtful, kind man, and he was well-liked by the all who knew him. Gary's love for our community was palpable, and the city of Berkeley suffered a great loss. At this time, funeral arrangements are pending, but we'll update you with those details as soon as they're available. So as we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to take a moment of silence to reflect upon Gary's legacy and all that he's done for our community.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've come to the portion of the meeting where you are welcome to come to the microphone with your comments. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a council member, a member of city staff, or department director, please leave your contact information on the table just outside this door. Please direct your comments to the chair. When you approach the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. You'll have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind and in your heart, and this portion is for items that are not on tonight's agenda.
Hey, good evening. I'm Jason Benedict. I live in Berkeley. I have two shout-outs tonight, one update, and then I have one question as well. First of all, I just want to shout out the Berkeley Art Bash, which just took place. It was wonderful. I've been here just for a few years, and it's always been such an incredible event, and it went so well. One of my favorite artists just came back after skipping a year, and I was so glad to be there. And in that same vein, I want to call out the Berkeley Environmental Advisory Committee, which held a bike wrangle. Essentially, they were just minding the bikes for everyone, and it was packed. Like, there were so many bikes in there, and they were watching it for everybody. Nobody had to lock up, nobody had to do anything, just sit there and go. And that type of infrastructure is the type of love that we share kind of within our city, and I can't get enough of it. With that in mind, we do have the League of Michigan bicyclists working to do an audit taking place on the 25th. I am still looking for four or five more people. You may have seen these blue flyers throughout the city, and I might leave one on the table if anybody else is interested. I am looking for four or five more people, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on the 25th, and we're looking at just auditing some of the bike traffic along an area that's been kind of a hotspot for accidents along Catalpa. So we're supporting kids getting to school in a big way as well. So that's my update. My last one is a question. I'm not sure if you can answer that tonight, probably can't, but I do think a few meetings ago, we commented on kind of what happened at Berkeley Days. I'm not sure if that is a report that's coming back to this committee or this council. If it is, I'd love to see it, if it's available already. If it's not, I can submit a request to the police. But I think it'd be good just to make sure that we're learning from sort of what happened and being transparent on what happened there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benedict. I'm going to close public comments. Oh, before I do that, Ms. Patterson, have we received any correspondence to be entered into the record?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Closing public comments. Ms. Patterson, please read the items on tonight's consent agenda.
Item one, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 40th regular city council meeting on Monday, June 3rd, 2024. Item two, warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1399. Item three, ordinance number O0624. Matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, amending Chapter 46 Elections, Article 2 Presyns, Section 46-16 through Section 46-23 of the Berkeley City Code. Item four, motion number M5624. Matter of approving a TMF grant agreement between the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, Eagle, and the City of Berkeley. This grant would provide roughly $570,000 in financial assistance for service line verification work. Item five, motion number M5724. Matter of approving the purchase of a Hunter Alignment System from Equipment Distributors Inc. of Fairhaven, Michigan, in the amount of $17,219.70. This purchase would utilize the State of Michigan MyDeal Cooperative Contract number Funding for this purchase would come from account 101-443-982-000 Public Works Garage Equipment.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Hennan?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Patterson. Any changes or corrections? Ms. Patterson, please call the roll.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hennan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Bellani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. Ms. Patterson, please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda.
Item one, recognitions presentations. Matter of receiving any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none, please read item number two.
Item two, presentation. Matter of receiving a presentation regarding the historical naming of the City Hall conference rooms.
I'm Rachel Patterson. I'm the deputy city clerk, but I'm also a member of our historical committee, and I, this is one of the projects that Charlie and I have been working on that we're really passionate about and we're excited to bring to you guys tonight.
Good evening, everybody. Happy Pride Month, happy week of Juneteenth. My name is Charlena Stevenson. I'm assistant to the city manager, and I am really excited to present this to you all. Rachel and I in the historical committee have really been working hard on this, and I'm really excited for the city to really see the work that we've been doing. Okay. In settling into our new spaces, after a recent renovation of City Hall, we have found an opportunity to honor the remarkable lives and contribution of three extraordinary historical women by dedicating our conference rooms in their names. In their unique ways, each of these women exemplify qualities invaluable to our community: hospitality, resilience, dedication to civic service. We feel that it is fitting that we commemorate these women, legacies in spaces in which our ideas, discussions, and progress will continue to flourish.
So for this project, I've gotten to engage one of my favorite things to do, which is research, and so I've been able to use the museum as well as local archives and call upon my fellow committee members for their expertise to develop some biographical information, clippings, photos to display in each room to kind of give us a full picture of what these women and their lives look like.
During Women's History Month, which was in March, we thought about women, historical women in Berkeley and women who actually made a big change in Berkeley. As City Hall was undergoing renovations, it was a great opportunity to name a few of the new conference rooms after stellar women. We decided to make the Mother Handsome Conference Room in the back of City Hall, and then the Jane Harris is the public-facing room in which council and staff meetings with external individuals, the Lois Addis Conference Room, which is in the back of City Hall, and it is extremely important to highlight these amazing women for their contributions to society.
So more information is available on each of these women and their lives through the packet, but also through the historical museum, but we'll give you guys kind of a quick rundown of what is important about each woman and why we kind of selected them. So our first dedication is Mary Ann Chapel, who is also known as Mother Handsome. She was the widow of an 1812 soldier, and she opened her home to fellow comers along, oh, excuse me, along Woodward, which was then called The Trail. So her hospitality was extremely well-known. She was known for not only quelling people's fears, but also providing them kind of a safe harborage while they were making the difficult journey to their eventual homestads.
And our second, our second dedication honors Jane Harris, who is a remarkable woman whose story embodies the resilience, determination, and community spirit. Born into enslavement in Georgia in 1795, Jane Harris faced unimaginable challenges from an early age. In 1937, after 42 years of enslavement, Jane's husband, Hamlet Harris, purchased her freedom. Together, they had seven children, and they moved to Royal Oak Township, Michigan. Family legend holds it, the demonstration between their deep bond, Hamlet adopted Jane's surname, becoming Hamlet Harris, which is pretty cool for a man back in the day. Initially residing in a modest log cabin on 40 acres, their determination and hard work soon led to the construction of a larger farm home. This home is located off of what now is Catalpa Drive and still stands today and is recognized as one of the oldest buildings in Berkeley. We hope that the Jane Harris Conference Room stands as a tribute to her strength, perseverance, and enduring legacy of the Harris family. May this room inspire us all to embrace the values, resilience, dedication, and community that are the Jane Harris legacy.
And then our third and last dedication is to Lois Addis. She was a dedicated public servant and community leader, a rarity in 1923. When the Village of Berkeley first began, she was elected as the only female office holder. She was the treasurer of the Village of Berkeley, which was extremely rare at the time, as I'm sure you can imagine. Not only did she serve as in village government, but she also was a member of the Women's Club and the Civic Committee. She was integral in hosting events that would further women's careers, as well as help people with unemployment and people facing difficulties throughout their lives. So she was truly kind of the full civic spirit.
In conclusion, we hope that these dedications will be more than just names on doors. They are tributes to the enduring legacies of women who shaped their worlds and courage compassion. Of course, more information is available at the Berkeley Historical Museum, which is located here at City Hall. Thank you.
We'd love to tell you more about them.
Thank you both so very much, and I'm grateful that you took the time to really research this, and it's such a thoughtful way to mark our new conference rooms. So thank you so much. I don't know if anyone else. Ms. Patterson, please read item number three.
Item three, motion number M5824. Matter of authorizing the amendment of the 2023-24 budget as presented.
Is there a motion to approve M5824?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Hennan?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Geinzer?
Yes, briefly, as Carl's coming up to the podium, this is one of the final steps that we take every fiscal year when we're working towards closing out the books. This will be the last amendment that you will see. So with that, I'd like to turn over to Finance Director Johnson to walk you through both the next two items on the agenda.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So again, as the city manager pointed out, this is our last opportunity to amend the budget. And so really, this amendment encompasses ensuring that the city remains compliant with the State Budget Act. So the State Budget Act says you must match the budget to start the year, and you're supposed to amend it as facts and circumstances change. So we have a whopping 13 days left in this fiscal year. So as you can imagine, this isn't about spending in the next 13 days, because I always tell everybody they're out of money in the can anyway. But it's more along the lines of adjusting our budgets to ensure that, especially on the expenditure side, that not one department is more than a dollar over, because if you're a dollar over, it gets disclosed in our auto report as a violation of the State Budget Act. So are they going to crush us and take all our money and withhold everything? No, not for a dollar. But again, the goal is to never be more than a dollar over everywhere and everywhere I go. So that's really what encompasses this. If you looked at it, a lot of the net bottom lines match exactly what you have in the budget that we just passed. The general fund's off a little bit. We had a couple sneaky retirements in the month of May that the payout of compensated absences is substantial for longtime employees. But I still believe the amount I have in the budget is the minimum that we will see come the end of the year, and we'll know that shortly, within a couple months after year-end when I get everything closed out. So with that, that is the overview of this. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or I'm not exactly sure if you'd like to go line by line or anything else.
Normally, I would say public comment, but I'm changing it up a little bit tonight. First, I'd like to offer the opportunity to council to ask any questions of Mr. Johnson before we toss it to public comments, and then we'll have another opportunity after. So, okay. Sorry. Councilmember Hennan?
Yeah. It does look like, just on a few places, we had higher revenues than expected as well.
That's correct. Yes. Yeah, because it's not only expenditures, it's, the favorable revenue helps offset some of the unfavorable variances in some of those other places. So yes, definitely. We're in very good shape this year.
Thank you.
Public comment. And whoever's working the timer, please, thank you.
Bruce Polk, Berkeley. I just wanted to mention on the amendment, one thing that you probably won't see as being obvious in there is that when the 25 budget was presented, there was a $262,000 charge in the capital outlay for some type of equipment. We didn't know what it was. We asked. But anyway, that is now removed from the amendment, from solid waste budget. And so you will see in the solid waste budget, a much more favorable fund balance. So just so, it's not real obvious there, but just wanted to point it out. Thank you.
Joshua Hunter, Berkeley. I had some questions I sent to the mayor and the staff as well. First is regarding the 2023 water revenue. I've been asking about this for several months, what the reason is for the shortfall. Rates were increased by 4% in 2023, but there was still a shortfall. Where is that being recognized? Second is regarding the revenues presented in this budget. First one is for property taxes. There's an adjustment for $220,000 that the note says it's adjusted year-to-date to collect. But based on the budget report that council received, the year-to-date balance report, the balance was 3.9 million, which was roughly about what the amended budget was. So where is this $200,000 coming from? Does the, does the finance director have another year-to-date report where we suddenly incurred another $200,000? Because it's just for this property tax line item, it's not for any of the other property taxes, the 2012 Village Police and Fire and so on. So I need to understand where is this coming from? And also, there's an adjustment for cable franchise fees. Notes mention that cable fees are dropping each year as budgeted, and according to the actual report through March, only 63% of the budget was used. So why is that being increased? Was $71,000 collected since March? So I think these are open questions, I mean, especially the water revenue. There's, in the budget, it mentioned, or in the amendment, it mentions that there's cash flow issues and lead line replacements being replaced. So this is pretty serious, and I think it needs to be addressed, and we've had several budget meetings where these questions have been asked and they haven't been answered. So Mayor, I ask that these questions be answered tonight, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm closing public comments. Any discussion or further questions from council? Okay, Ms. Patterson, please call the roll on M5824.
Hennan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Bellani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Patterson, please read item number four on tonight's agenda.
Item four, motion number M5924. Matter of approving the internal services annual allocation as included in the approved fiscal year 2024-2025 budget.
Is there a motion to approve M5924?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Hennan?
Support.
With support from Mayor Protem Gavin. Mr. Geinzer?
Just briefly, thank you, Mayor and Council. As Finance Director Johnson will walk you through, we've had a lot of conversations about how some of these internal service fees are calculated, what goes in the process. Carl did talk about that a couple meetings ago, some of the guidance that we use from the state, what's allowed, what's not allowed. Tonight, he'll walk you through what's behind this budget that you just recently passed, and certainly if there's any questions or things that you would like to see changed, just let us know, and we can move forward from there.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. So again, we're referring to the Excel summary that I put together. So as I discussed in the budget session, this is the city's opportunity to allocate administrative costs to restrictive funds, like our major and local street fund. The state acknowledges that the city incurs administrative costs and that those costs, up to 10%, it's written in the Act 51 law, can be allocated to those funds. The federal grants, the county CDBG program, says up to 10% from admin can be allocated. So that's the 10% general allocation methodology that I follow, usually try not to exceed the 10%. So what I've done here is listed, so again, this is the detail that we were talking about before. So the departments in question there are, again, the administrative departments that we have: city council, city manager, finance, city clerk, IT, communications, treasury, city hall, city attorney. All of those are cost centers that we don't allocate costs directly to the street funds, directly to the solid waste funds, directly to any of those funds. We do not allocate costs directly to them. We allocate an administrative charge based on a percentage of these costs. And so, which you can see there, the very first column there is the original budget that we have there. The next column there is, we don't, the state recommends that you put your fringe benefit costs within the departments. We don't do that here. We have a department called Fringe Benefits for Active Employees. And so that's what the next column is there, so that's the actual fringe benefits. So you can't just look at the department itself. The department itself is just salaries, FICA, and supplies, and, you know, those kind of things. There's no healthcare, there's no life, there's no dental, there's none of that stuff allocated there. So that has to be added in there as well. And retiree healthcare costs, again, are a cost that incurred that are spread citywide. We don't spread them to each of the departments like we should. Actually, you'll see that coming in the next 12 months. But as of right now, it's in a department called Retiree Healthcare Costs. So again, what you see here is that third column there is those costs that are being allocated to come up with a true total cost of each of the departments there. The employee benefit costs are allocated based on payroll. That's the little summary I have there in the bottom. So based on the payroll within each of those departments, that's how the healthcare costs got allocated, and then same with the retiree benefits. To come up with a total cost, then from the total cost, we look at how do we allocate the cost to the various funds? And for that, we utilize the total revenue methodology, and that's the first column you see there above. So what we do is look at total revenue for these funds, these restrictive funds, so general fund, major streets, local streets, CDBG, you see them all listed there. Every single fund of the city, we look at total revenues, and so in this case here, the total revenues are $26.9 million. So again, think about that. With treasury, what we're talking about there is tax bills is, you know, a primary collection there. So we collect taxes for solid waste fund, they collect the water and sewer bills, they collect a lot of those things. So the simplest way to do this, again, this isn't person-by-person, you know, allocations, it's in total. So 54% of our total revenues are the general fund, so that's the cost that get allocated there. And so we go through this and figure out what percentage is the water and sewers fund, which is 24%, 24% of the total cost of council, 24% of the total cost of city manager, et cetera, and those come across. So when you look there, the subtotals there, except for pension and DDA. Pension and DDA, we just acknowledge the fact that we provide services to them, but they can't afford, or we choose not to allocate a significant amount. We just choose to allocate an arbitrary $20,000 and $25,000 to those two funds, because again, there's not, there's not millions there. We don't want to eat it up with administrative costs. Those are for other purposes. So those two just get arbitrary minimal allocations, but the rest of them there, you can see there, the bulk amount that I have in the bottom there, that's our actual allocation compared to what we could based on this administrative internal service allocation there. And in every single one of them, we charge less than the 10% that we can. But again, this is just a guideline as far as, you know, so again, this is the proven, you know, okay, that fast-talking guy said last time, this is what everybody does, but show us for Berkeley how this works out to us. And again, every single water, sewer, solid waste, major, local, every single one of them, we have the opportunity, if we follow the 10% rule, to charge more, but we don't. We come up with these allocation amounts. I think part of the confusion again as well is the fact that when times got tough, like especially in the solid waste fund, what we did was we took part of the administrative charges and got rid of them. What you're supposed to do is leave them in the fund, because that support is still there, should always be there. Usually, you leave them in the fund and then just subsidize it with the general fund money, so that when it comes time like this, when all of a sudden we go back to where we were before, everybody forgets that that's back where we were before, and now it's why are you charging all of these costs to it? This methodology, you come up with a similar amount every single time. But again, whoever's here at the time chose to reduce that allocation, shove it back in the general fund, and now, actually, you switched it last year in 2023 and 2024, those are the amounts that have been in there as well. So again, the whole purpose of this was to enlighten you a little bit as to where this comes from, show you that, you know, like in the water and sewer case, I think we're only at about 5% is what we're allocating accordingly, because again, the water and sewer fund has a large amount of revenue, and 5% is another $400,000 more. We don't, you know, that's not something we want to do. So it's really just based on these allocations, and this is part of the budget process, as we discussed. So at any time, you know, so at this meeting tonight, it's, I don't want to charge something there. If there's, you know, if there's inclination to change it, that's why we brought it here as a motion to you. So if you don't like any of these charges, if you want them reduced, again, the allocation is, and most want to be as aggressive as they can with this, because again, it's restricted monies that we can utilize to offset true administrative costs within the general fund. So if we want to reduce them, we just end up refunding or reimbursing the general fund for administrative costs less than what we've already got included in our budget. But now is the opportunity for that.
Just, if I may, just ask Carl a couple clarifying questions. Carl, you've worked in a number of communities, you've been in municipal auditing for 30-plus years, if I recall correctly. I was never super heavily involved in other communities on this, but as I recall, this is a process that is used as a pretty standard practice across communities. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, it is. Yeah, this method, again, methodologies can change, but the doing it, the allocation of these costs is, 99% of the communities would be doing it, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so similarly to what I did last agenda item, are there questions from council that you have for Mr. Johnson or Mr. Geinzer before I open up?
I have a few.
Yes, Councilmember Patterson?
So just so I can clarify this document, so with the total cost of the department, your fourth column there, you simply just take the percentage in the green and times it through, I don't know if you have it with you, but times it up there and get that number, correct?
It's using the percentage of revenues in that first table down below, that's where that comes from, yes.
Yeah, so if the account goes up in revenue, for example, water and sewer, so if that one goes up, like if we raised our rates to self-fund that account, what then would happen to these numbers? They would also?
So remember, these are expenditures. So this is allocating part of the cost, so it doesn't have anything to do with revenue. The revenue side is, can the fund afford to pay these costs? So what happened was when the solid waste fund didn't have enough revenue to cover this, we moved the administrative costs out back to the general fund. So rather than allocate like 8%, we allocated 4% or 3%.
Right, but so that's the total cost of that Right, but so if that's the total cost of that fund, if that increased, would the internal service increase?
There's a potential for it to increase. Where that opportunity comes is the city manager proposed budget comes to you, and at that point, they say, we're going to keep it the same, or we're proposing an increase, and that's where you get the decision to say yea or nay.
It's not an automatic based on, if revenues are higher, this percent calculation is based at the time we calculated this. It does not adjust automatically if revenues change.
Sure. And then, how do we know the percentage used, or, I'm just going to use the city attorney because it's easier, it's the bottom one, the $35,219, that he spends that amount of time or percentage of time on the water and sewer account?
Again, we don't, you'll never know specifically. So that is a full-blown cost allocation. If you, you can do a full-blown cost allocation, it's like hundreds of hours to do, so that's every person in every department charting their time for a year, how much time do you actually spend, et cetera. That's why I say, most places would use the general allocation of total revenues, you know, this is the total inflow, so we're using that percentage to allocate people's times within there. So could the city attorney's office be a percent or two higher or lower? Yes.
I mean, or even a percentage or two, correct?
Yes.
It could be 50% higher or more.
Odds are, it's probably not, but yes. And given years, you could spend half their time on lawsuit issues, you know, water sewer related, sorry, I said lawsuit, water sewer-related issues versus, it might be a DDA thing this year, or it might be, you know, a general fund thing. It really varies year to year. Again, this is just a, on average, a commonly-used methodology.
Sure. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Black?
Yeah, Carl, and for the people at home, I mean, if I was to say, explain this to me like I was a six-year-old. Okay? I'm looking at city clerk, and I'm scrolling over, and it goes to water and sewer, $131,849. Explain that to me.
So that is 25% of the costs, it's actually 24.98% of the cost of the clerk's office, is being allocated, is a possible allocation to the water and sewer fund related to their time spent. The percentage you see in that first column there, it says total revenue, that's the percentages that were applied to each department. And you can see there, it comes up, like in the water sewer fund, it comes up with a total of $860,000, but we don't choose to do the entire amount. So literally, we're only doing half of that. So even though we're saying 24% of the clerk's office, the reality is, we're only allocating half that amount, we're only allocating about 12%. That just comes up with a, the maximum, that 10% that I talked about, that's the max, and we choose to allocate less.
Councilmember Henon?
Okay, yeah, and I feel like I'm trying to find somewhere in between, I was going to use the clerk's office as the same example, that seems like, that's a, you know, they're primarily doing elections and a lot of other clerk things, I don't know if 25% of their time is water and sewer. But, you know, the alternative proposed was a full-blown cost allocation, which would be, you know, a lot of overhead, and so now we spend a lot of time doing that instead of getting work done. Is there something in between where we can make estimates that, you know, don't have what seem like very large amounts for the clerk's office, but without doing, you know, full-blown cost allocation?
Well, so the other side of that is, does treasury really spend 70% of their time in water and sewer versus, you know, the 25% that we have here? You know, it's, you could probably make that argue with every single department. That's why, again, just using a common methodology. Bottom line, though, rather than get into each of those details, it's what are you comfortable with? Again, this is, the city manager proposed this, it was ultimately passed. So if here tonight, you say, I think we should charge water sewer 50 grand less, or I think we should charge solid waste 100 grand less, that's up to you guys. This is the methodology, this is what comes behind it. Again, the theory is, we're charging an administrative fee to these various funds, and we could do up to these, the top number there, and again, we choose every one of them, we're allocating less than what this is. So I'll, you know, keep that in mind as well, so.
And so maybe if I could repeat it another way. This is an estimating tool, and, yeah, in this water and sewer line, clerk's probably high, treasury's maybe low, probably if you look at it in the aggregate, if we did that cast allocation study, we're going to be in this ballpark, probably. And, and so, and that has just been a practice, it's been a well-adapted practice, cities all over, and, you know, we could spend a lot of time drilling down on that, but, you know, where do we cut it off? And, and, you know, when does it become productive or unproductive? Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. And like I say, major and local streets, those are, the state expects to see 10% on those, you know, so that's just one of those administrative deals. So really, you're just talking about solid waste, water and sewer, you know, those allocations right there. So to me, those are the big ones. In water sewer, we're only doing half of what we potentially could based on this. So even these percentages you see there, basically, we're allocating half of what that is. And then in the solid waste side, again, that one's pretty close to the 10%, because that one, again, just recently got bumped up, but two years, I think it was 150 before 23, and then it got bumped back up to 190, something along those lines.
And just add one more thing, I, you know, I went back as far as 2015, looking at a lot of these numbers, and 2017, 18, when we changed this, we've stayed pretty similar on the percentages that we allocate. We've been doing this process since then, and it's been pretty similar. So the kind of OCD side of me wants to see the very, the very detailed and precise and, but there's also, you know, we got to get work done and not, you know, spend forever on that. So, you know, I'm trying to balance those two sides of it.
Councilmember Baker?
Well, thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate the dialogue and the thought process here, for sure, because this is important. You mentioned earlier, this is about expense, not revenues. So if we were to say we wanted to spend, you know, $50,000 less here, it pops up $50,000 more somewhere else, right? Because we can't just wave it away, so it's basically a geography function. I also did some look back as well, and I appreciate the thought process to see that this has been very consistent over the past, you know, eight, nine years, something like that. With aberration in a year or two ago, like you said, a couple years back, we, at the time, made the decision to move that back into the general fund. What we're reacting to now is just putting it back where it used to be and asking questions about that. And it's good, healthy dialogues, and we understand, we're just putting it back the way it used to be all those years. And again, we're only using half of what the state would allow us to do to allocate those funds. And a third final point, I mean, the funds that we're looking at are the larger ones, there's a lot of, you know, commas and zeros and all that kind of stuff in those. And so that's why, you know, the smaller percentage appears to be a bigger number, just because it's a, it's a small slice of a far bigger allocation there, so. I'm, yeah, I appreciate the work that went into this. This satisfies what I was looking to see when we last spoke about this, and I appreciate your time, and I think we're pretty close to having that equilibrium there of, you know, just enough due diligence to make sure that this is consistent with best practice and consistent with the city of Berkeley, and I appreciate your time with us. Thank you.
Did you have something more to add?
Just one, I think Councilmember Henon kind of hit on it, but how do we know that the numbers are accurate, then, if we haven't looked at a cost allocation in the last 10 years? So when I asked the question on the Q and A, you know, we sent before, the previous city manager said there's time sheets. Does that only work for laborers or also administration?
No, so remember, again, this doesn't get to the time sheet level. This is approximately, so we choose, I chose the method of, based on revenue allocation, that's how it was allocated. So the reasonableness portion comes from me, when I look at it, I say, is it a reasonable fee to charge? And again, this methodology came from my doing this for many, many years. Then it gets to you as far as, are you okay with it? Again, if you're not okay with it, or if you, you know, like you said, 25% seems high, I want to, I want to reduce that. Again, that's why we're bringing it before you, you know. So again, if you just say, I don't care, I think it's too high, that's why we're here tonight, so. But this is, the reason it's, we use 2023 for the allocation is, I just did it from scratch. I just want to make sure you had the most recent numbers, based on those numbers, you know, the last audited numbers we have, these are the true costs, and this is what the allocation works out using that methodology. And again, if this is something that you want during our budgets and going forward, which I know it is, you know, this schedule will be included in there for each and every year. Thank you.
Mr. Geinzer?
Yeah, I'm just going to put this in as simple terms as I can. I know that there is a desire for this to be all kinds of detailed math, there's no magic to this, and this is pretty standard practice. To some of the comments that come, that came up, we can get into more detail. It's, how much do you want to spend financially and administrative time-wise to put that all together? Is there a happy middle ground? That was one of the questions, there might be. I don't think Carl and I, Carl or I are prepared to say what that could potentially look like. What we're telling you is just based on experience, based on the time and work in other communities, definitely more so Carl than me, especially as a municipal auditor, this is how it's done. And there are communities that might look at doing, I'm going to do a cost allocation study every 10, 15 years or something like that, and we can certainly look into that. I have not looked into doing one for a very, very long time. I do know they're pricey, it takes a lot of staff time to do them. We can do that. But again, as Carl said, it really comes down to us bringing you a recommendation and the city council making a policy decision of whether or not you're comfortable with these numbers based on what's been provided or not. And if not, how do we get to that level of comfort? I think, again, I'm just a guy here trying to keep an operation going, but what Carl's saying, I think in very simple terms, the way I think, is we could be charging a lot more, but we don't. We, again, it's this gut check. And yes, I know there are folks in the community that may not appreciate that, yes, sometimes when you're running an organization, there is a gut check factor. You don't always have every single level of detail. That being said, if council wants us to do that, we can do that. It's not going to be us, though. We're going to have to pay somebody to come in and do that. So I don't, probably oversimplified it to an extent, but that's kind of how we're looking at that.
Thank you.
And just be aware, too, this allocation is subject to audit. The auditors do, in fact, review it as part of their annual audit, so.
And to that point, we've had successful, positive audits all these years using these same numbers. So we're not on dangerous ground with what's been recommended.
Any other questions or comments? I'm going to open this up to public comment now.
Bruce Pol, Berkeley. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I wish I had enough time to talk about all of those points that were made, but just real briefly, I've looked at the history of the budget, there's no shift in allocations, going back and putting stuff in general fund, and this is moving stuff back. It's not there. The Act 51 is a Michigan Department of Transportation Act. It is regarding the money that they give you for road improvements and such, based on gas tax and everything else. And it's a cap, it's not a suggestion, it's not a recommendation. No, the other cities don't use this methodology. If you listen to Carl carefully, he said other cities do allocations, but not this methodology. What I wanted to say is that an approval of this motion for the methodology of the internal services allocations will contribute to the belief that the city no longer pursues or wants to commit to any ethical transparency of fiduciary responsibilities. This motion is simply an attempt to end any conversation pertaining to the transfers out of our restricted tax dollars. The taxpayers still deserve and request to know how expenses are used. We simply want to know what we are paying for. These questions are important, they're not just geographic. They are important because it's not simply a matter of where the dollars are placed on a spreadsheet. Instead, we have made decisions to increase fees, reduce city services, increase taxes for unqualified transfers, unquantified transfers of restricted fund and other unexplained expenses. As a reminder, for instance, the sanitation, we pay a specific sanitation tax, bag tag fees, refuse fees on our water bill. These taxes and fees are only to be used for qualified and justifiable expenses related to sanitation. The budget, however, is effectively transferring money from the sanitation fund to the general fund without any information about what the actual incurred costs to the general fund were. The citizens of Berkeley have asked for and have been unable to receive the cost reimbursement basis to use for the determination of internal service transfers in an effort to justify our taxation and fees. And it appears that after a Freedom of Information request, that there is not any documentation to support the calculation of transferred amounts. There was no audit of this methodology. The time spent not working towards a reasonable justification of expenses now seems to outpace the time it would have taken to become transparent and begin to move forward. A vote no will message to the community that you, at the least, wish to continue the pursuit of legitimate accountability. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pol. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm closing public comments. Any further questions or discussion from council? Ms. Patterson, please call the roll on M. 5924.
Patterson?
No.
Belloni?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
No.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. M. 5924 has passed. Ms. Patterson, please read item number five on tonight's agenda.
Item five, motion number M. 6024. Matter of approving a planned unit development for a multifamily development on the east side of Coolidge Highway, south of Cambridge Road, and north and south of Columbia Road, as submitted by the applicant, Design House Architecture, on behalf of WJ Ventures LLC, 2465 Columbia, 2468 Columbia, and 2476 Columbia, and 2475 Cambridge.
Is there a motion to approve M. 6024?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Henon?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Black. Mr. Geinzer?
Yes, if I could, real quick, before Kristin walks you through the PUD project before you, we did find out this morning that where there were a couple attachments that were not in the council packet. I'm not thrilled by that, we're going to make, work on making some changes to avoid that. We did get them up on the website as soon as we could today, once we were notified. And I would just note, for the benefit of council, those, the items that were missing were available through the planning commission packet from the last meeting. Hopefully, that doesn't create any issues there, but I want to be open and transparent that that was indeed missing from the packet when it was supposed to be in there, so. Any other questions on that? You can, you know how to get ahold of me, but with that, like, turn it over to Kristin.
Thank you. Good evening, Council and Madam Mayor. I have quite a few notes I'm going to refer to, which is a little bit out of the way I usually do things, but just bear with me, I don't want to miss anything. And then, following my remarks, where I just want to walk you generally through things, the applicant does have a presentation as well.
Sure.
They'll get into some more specifics. So I want to start off by talking about what?
Point of order, Madam Mayor? Point of order, please?
Excuse me?
Point of order?
Yes.
You don't have to acknowledge that.
You'll have an opportunity to speak during public comments on this agenda item, so, Ms. Kaplansky will continue.
I'm asking the order, when will that be in terms of the process?
Well, we'll hear from Ms. Kaplansky, we'll hear from the developer. I'm going to ask if there are questions from council, and then there will be public comment.
Okay. I would like to ask that that be changed and allow me to speak prior.
No, thank you, Mr. Terrell, please sit down. Ms. Kaplansky, continue.
Yes. So I want to start by talking about what a PUD is generally. I know that a lot of you are familiar with it, but there might be some people at home who are not. So a PUD is intended to offer an alternative to traditional development by permitting some flexibility in ordinance regulations. That doesn't mean that we don't look at our guiding documents, the plan must still be consistent with the master plans, goals, and objectives, and with the future land use map. So we definitely ask council and planning commission to look at those items. Additionally, a public benefit must be provided, and in Berkeley's ordinance, we're very specific about that. We list seven public benefits that can be options, and the PUD must meet at least three of those public benefits. Process-wise, and this is just, again, generally, a PUD must be considered first by the planning commission, which this one has gone through, after a review by staff. So staff's role is to make a recommendation to the planning commission and to determine that the plans are complete and ready for their review. At the planning commission meeting, a public hearing is held, and the planning commission makes a recommendation of approval or denial to council at that time. This is the step we're at now, where this proposal is before the council, and we're asking you tonight to consider the concept and the draft documents that are with it. Should you approve that concept in the draft documents this evening, we would finalize the PUD agreement with the help of the city attorney and with the applicant's attorney, and that final document will be brought back to you for approval a second time. So this is not the last time you would see this if it was approved tonight. In this particular PUD, the applicant is proposing a 57-unit multiple-family development. This is contained in two different buildings on the east side of Coolidge, centered around Columbia and Cambridge. Associated utilities, stormwater facilities, parking, landscaping, lighting, all of the things we see with a normal site plan are also included in this package. The planning commission considered the proposal at its May meeting and recommended approval, finding that the following three public benefits were met. They found extensive landscaping beyond the requirements of a site plan, open space or a public plaza, and efficient consolidation of poorly dimensioned parcels. Deviations from the ordinance, which were also included in that motion and are typically included in PUD motions, included a deficient setback along Coolidge, a deficient number of parking spaces, an overage on the percentage of compact car spaces, and the omission of a non-residential use on the first floor. I would be happy to discuss any of these deviations in detail after the applicant gets through their presentation or if you have questions, but for now, I'm just gonna leave it as those general comments. There were also a number of conditions that the planning commission attached to their approval recommendation. One is that the parking spots closest to the southeast entry on the north building and the space accessed across from the side street access be removed. So they recommended that the applicant remove four parking spaces. Also, they would like to see an increase in landscaping and a change to a permeable path in the open space area. Lastly, they wanted to see vertical clearance dimensions of projections and labeled rear setbacks. I asked that they include these items on a sheet, one single sheet, that shows those changes instead of updating all of the plan sets. For your consideration, they did meet those standards and included those items on the sheet, and those changes were made. They also asked that the PUD agreement includes street trees be provided on Coolidge, that landscaping offered to adjacent properties be installed during construction, and that each unit be assigned at least one parking spot. The draft PUD agreement includes those items as well. Council is now asked to consider the plan, the public benefits, and the requested deviations, and to make a determination regarding the proposal. As I mentioned before, should this be approved, the matter would come back for final approval of the agreement, at which point we would have a full agreement with all of the exhibits attached. As I said, the applicant has a presentation as well. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplansky. Would the applicant like to speak about the project?
Thank you. My name is Wayne Wadika. I'm a Birmingham resident, and I've been doing business in the Berkeley Oak Park Huntington Woods area since 1992. Can I have a clicker? We have, thank you. I'd like to start out tonight by just saying thank you to the city, the city planner Kristen, city manager Matt, former city manager Matt, and Nate have worked with us, city attorney Dan Christ, the planning commission, and Carlisle Wortman, for all their work through the last, the last year and a half on this project. They have all represented Berkeley very well. They've treated us very fairly, and we've had an open, an honest dialogue, and we've taken some really good feedback from, from all the parties mentioned. So I wanna thank you for that, and also I wanna thank all of you for your service and all the work you do. It's tireless, I'm sure, so thank you. I'd like to start out talking about moving Berkeley forward with our project. Our team is here today. We have Peter Stillrayer from Design House Architects, Joe Anderson, Giffords Webster, and our two interns, Wayne Wadika II and Elliot Nederhut, have been working on this project since last summer on their college breaks. We're here this evening. A little bit about our background, we've been doing business here for over 30 years. I personally have over 40 years of real estate development and brokerage experience. We founded the Certified Restoration Dry Clean Network here, which is an offshoot of our Huntington cleaners business, and located our headquarters here. We own property throughout Berkeley. We've developed residential homes over the course of, back in 2001, we built five single-family homes on Catalpa. We have property on 12 Mile. We have not only this property on Coolidge, but the property across the street, the former Los Alamos Credit Union. Our headquarters is right next door, and we have property on the Huntington Woods and Oak Park corners. So we're genuinely interested in what, in a good development in this area, and we're heavily invested in the area, and we've been, obviously, an active supporter in the community and will continue to do so. I'd like to give you a timeline of this project, because it goes back quite a ways. We started here in 92. We built our world headquarters, international headquarters here in 2006. We acquired these properties, there were five or four or five different acquisitions to assemble this block and a half. That started back in 2007, and over a four-year period, we were able to assemble that block and a half. There are currently three duplexes that are about eight years old. I've been there since, well, eight years. In '22, after the city redid the zoning map, we rezoned the property to fit into the Gateway District. And then we just, we began discussions with the city manager and planners and Carlisle Wortman in June of '22 about the potential of this project. We have spoken, in June of '23, we solicited a lot of feedback from neighbors. I personally went door-to-door, spoke to as many as I could in the immediate area. We, in August, the Berkeley Public Safety Reviews approved the initial plans, as well as the Department of Public Safety and Public Works approved it. The Downtown Development Authority, when we presented, supported the project unanimously. The Berkeley Chamber of Commerce, we presented to their group, got some feedback there. There was one, one member of the board that wasn't exactly happy with it, but she gave good feedback, and we appreciated that. Then in September '23, city engineers Hubble, Roth, and Clark recommended approval of the plan and recognized the benefits. One of the main benefits was the underground storage and retention of stormwater that we will talk more in detail about later. In September '23, we presented to the planning commission for our run-through. We got great feedback. October '23, we did a traffic study, we petitioned a traffic study and a shadow study at the request of some council members. We were happy to do that, and it helped us understand the project a little better. October of '23, we received planning commission approval by a vote of four to two, and they recognized three of the seven recognizable benefits for a planned unit development. We went to work a little further after that and made some changes to the project. We will present those to you later in more detail. We presented, and we presented in May and received approval by the planning commission of five to one, also recognizing, reaffirming those three or seven recognizable benefits, and that brings us to where we are today, just for the benefit of a little bit of history. The city planning commission recommended approval of PUD based on three, three recognizable benefits, extensive landscaping, open space, public space provisions, and the efficient consolidation of land. We, we also have been through, this is our third or fourth public hearing at this point, so we've received pretty good feedback throughout the process. What's the vision for the project? Quite frankly, we've been trying to get feedback throughout the process. We've been neighbors here for quite some time. We intend to continue to be here for years to come. We're gonna continue to invest in the, in the, in the area. We prioritized a lot of the discussions with the local neighbors and with members of planning commission and the, and the city officials. We've also coordinated and received valuable insights from the DDA and the chamber. And I'm not sure if it's in your package or not, but for the planning commission meetings, we received numerous letters of support, not only from the business community, but from many residents. I'm not sure if that was shared with you, but there are quite a few people that made a point of writing letters on, on behalf of the project. The site overview is a modern project. It's gonna be really nice construction. It'll be a mix of one-bedroom and studio apartments. It'll be 57 units that'll range from 600 to 1,300 square feet. We think it optimizes the space. It creates a walkable area, beautifies the gateway, which is one of the master plan designs, and it replaces, you know, three 80-year-old duplexes, which we maintain and have maintained, fully, fully occupied this whole time. And we think it, it's, the design is, is one that fits the, fits the area. Why now? Berkeley has an incredibly high demand for, for housing, for high-quality housing. Currently, 73% of the existing land use in Berkeley is single-family homes, while only 1% of the land uses are, is dedicated or is currently multifamily. And the master plan adopted in 2021 clearly addresses a need for alternative housing to support the city's vision and, for success. The master plan is, to quote it specifically, calls for a vibrant business, community preservation, neighborhoods, and fostering city values. We believe we do that. The plan calls for alternative housing in a community that is currently predominantly single-family home. This clearly does that. It creates a walkable gateway district, and supports economic activity for local businesses, and influences, obviously, the tax base and property values in the area will go up significantly compared to what the current tax base is on those duplexes. And the design, we believe, is high-quality. Peter will go through that in more detail with you today. And of the 1,656 acres total, totaling the city of Berkeley, only 6.6 acres are vacant or available for development today, which requires anyone that's gonna build anything that goes in the direction of the master plan to assemble properties, as we've done over the course of a number of years. So it's, and given the hardship in the downtown area, particularly in the gateway, is the depth of the property. So in order to build something and have the parking and meet all the requirements of a good development, you have to go wide. So it's, it's not an easy city to develop in. So a project like this, I think we've, we've brought forward a very unique project. It's come together over a number of years, since we started acquiring these, these parcels in 2007, and that's really what it takes to pull a project off in Berkeley that fits with the city's master plan and your, your vision for a viable business community in the downtown area. So we think we've, we've thoughtfully put together a good presentation and a, and a good development for Berkeley. Now, who's gonna live there? Who will live in the Columbia? We think the rental rates are aligned with today's market rate. This will be market rate. It'll be a mix of tenants, single people, young professionals, those people transitioning to or from homeownership. There seems to be a very high demand in the area for people that wanna stay in Berkeley that don't necessarily want to own a home, and we believe this, this does just that. And it offers an opportunity for nonresidents to get a taste of Berkeley by having a rental opportunity here rather than coming in to purchase a single-family home, which, as I said, is the predominant housing stock in Berkeley. So we think it offers a look for people to come into Berkeley, get a taste of the downtown, get a taste of the culture here, and see what Berkeley's all about. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Peter. We're gonna break this up into three sections. So Peter's gonna go through the design, and then Joe will go through the engineering. So Peter?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Peter Stillrayer. I'm the chief architect of Design House Architecture, 3,300 Auburn Road, Auburn Hills, I wrote a paragraph about my design philosophy that I wanted to read, because it's kinda complicated, but I wanted to start by saying that this is not an unusual or controversial type of layout for an apartment building in suburban Oakland County. It shouldn't come off as it's pushing any boundaries or, you know, creating anything that isn't done all the time. I can point you to probably 25 of these common hall podium, multi-floor apartment buildings around, you know, you know where they are. They're, they're all over 9 Mile, they're up in Rochester, Rochester Hills, Royal Oak. But what's, what's important about this design is that it is contextually relevant. And when I, when I kind of get to feel a place, Coolidge, say, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at what I feel, what I see when I'm driving up and down or walking up and down the street, and it's a complex, visually complex corridor, right? So the last thing I wanna do is come out with this, with this, to call it a clown show of a building with a lot going on, all kinds of colors and heights and traditional artifacts and, and things like that. This building needs to be understated and elegant, and what I drew from was kind of that mid-century manufacturing look of the simplicity from, from those days. And to remember that a lot of those types of buildings went on to become multifamily buildings and commercial buildings and retail buildings and breweries and other things. They're always adaptively reused, keeping it nice and clean. It's visually randomized with, with fenestration that features deep-set balconies, windows, and protruding balconies. These features give the elegant but simple building movement and scale. And then moving into the site and some of the other details, the stronger streetscaping, we did back the building off from the street, added lots of landscaping and other hard features that kind of bring the scale down, which is appropriate for the pedestrians and the passersby in the area. So that's kind of the, the high level, hey, the high level of the building. So when I say visually complex area, I mean, there's a lot of different colors, a lot of different types of buildings, big trees, then there's empty parking lots, then there's civic buildings, and there's longer setbacks, then many, many, many of the buildings are right up against the sidewalk. So you kind of have a lot going on. So we, we didn't want the building to have to, have to go through all that, so we kept the building clean and elegant. There are some features with the metal, oh, this is, we're gonna go back and talk about? The, this is the feature that we took off from the previous approval from planning commission. Probably have all heard about the bridge that went across. The, the fundamentals of the design stayed the same, the height, the number of units, the number of parking spaces, the materials, the access points, the drive aisles, everything stayed exactly the same. The bridge went away, and it became two separate buildings. We did, we did soften the residential side of the building by wrapping the, the bronze metal roof or the gray metal roof down and down lower to help scale it into the residential area. There's better slides of how this blends, and it came, I think it was one of the first slides you saw. But we also don't have protruding balconies on the residential side, so you're not kind of, you're not leaning out over, but we are many, many feet away from the single-family homes and, and equipped with a, with a six-foot masonry wall to block headlights and sound and things like that from interrupting the neighbors. You can see there's a good view from coming out of Columbia. That would be the end cap of the building, heading toward Coolidge. I think I covered all those points in my, in my written paragraphs. I did wanna mention something that Kristen brought up about the deviations. The parking is, is insufficient, but only based on the way your code is written today. We do have sufficient parking for this building. It's mostly one-bedroom units and studios. In, in my experience, will be amply parked, but we do have to ask for relief from things like that. The front setback as well, this debatable, that I think the front setback is, we're still setback from most of the buildings near us. We're probably further back than the average, and both buildings are back. They, they vary a little bit. Business on the ground floor, deviation, I, I'm not sure how to address that, except that, as Wayne said, the sites are very narrow and assembling is important. If we were to have business on the ground floor along with residential on top, which is also very common, we would have to be able to assemble off of Coolidge way back into the neighborhood to be able to park it and, and, and show that vision, or shrink the building into something that developmentally would be economically and feasible. So that pretty much covers, I think, what I wanted to get into. So the buildings, the buildings are four stories, although the fourth story is in a mansard roof, so it only appears to be a three-story facade along the street. The rear of the building, I covered that, has a, has a much deeper setback. The perimeter walls are 34 feet tall. Mid-rise of the mansard roof is 40. No third-floor balconies on the east side facing, I covered that, and we do have a larger setback on the, on a couple of the sides that exceeds the city requirements. I guess that was just the east side. We were asked to provide a shadow study, and I, I believe we were given a date. I think it's on there, July 9th at 6 o'clock PM. One of the planning commissioners or council members was interested in that day to see what our, what our shadow, and you can see on that day, the shadow does not even cross the property line of the, of the east side at that time. What we enhanced when we, when we redesigned, we did add additional slope on the roof line. The parking dimensions were revised based on city comments. Trash receptacles were added along in our streetscape enhancements. Mechanicals are moved to the very top of the roof, so they're not visible, and the elevations were updated to showcase windows in the stairwells. But for the most part, the design is in alignment with the approved or- But for the most part, the design is in alignment with the approved or with the previous approval from the two PUD planning commission meetings. There's a good view of the mansard roof with the balconies cut out in the mansard and some So how do we address privacy? Well, the third floor protruding balconies on the east side have been taken out. You know, I'm not sure about these bullet points, if they're mine or if they're operations or civil, are they mine? Well, in terms of the landscaping offsite, I'll let you address that, Wayne. But the high-quality masonry walls do provide for a nice visual texture and good sound absorption. Other than that, the building does offer to buffer the neighborhood from the noise of Coolidge. I think that's kind of an obvious outcome of what we've designed. Majority of the lights under the building will be shielded, so we're not going to be cascading any light off the property, especially to the east. And any kind of mechanicals, as I stated before, that make any kind of noise will be screened on the top of the roof and most likely completely inaudible, since there'll be very small air conditioners for the small units of the building. So another idea, maybe Wayne, maybe operations needs to talk about this, but in terms of who's going to rent these units, this is going to have a lot of covered parking and an elevator access to hallways with both A and B units. So if you don't understand, it's a kind of an ADA accessibility issue. Every unit in this building will be able to be accessed by anybody with any kind of mobility. So if we were doing four-story townhome walk-up, you know how that goes. You sell it or you rent it, and suddenly maybe somebody in the family or in the friend group can't get all the way to the third floor where the kitchen is or something like that. This is not like that. Every unit is on one level, and they're all accessed by one of the two elevators. And the majority of the parking is covered, which is really going to come off as a huge selling point to this building. I think the parking allocation is right. It's the right amount under each building on either side, although this is one project. It is two different buildings. It'll be under the same management and at the same time. The bicycle racks and EV chargers are added per discussions with the administration. Ample, more than we need for those things, but we know that that's going to be a feature for anybody that wants to live in kind of a dense or semi-dense suburban area like we're in right now. With that, I'm going to bring up Joe Anderson from Giffords and talk about the engineering.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. My name is Joe Anderson with Giffords Webster Engineers, the site civil engineer for the project. It's this button, there we go. Just to kind of rehash what's been talked, we went through planning commission several times. First time, we got a 4-2 approved and then a 5-1 with some changes, the three points, landscaping, open space, and consolidation of land parcels. So the open space, I have a slide coming up. You kind of see that along with the landscaping, we provide some nice areas there. There was the unanimous consensus that it does meet those. The only item for the first floor retail, Peter kind of went over and so did Wayne, difficult to do that with these kind of sized lots and still have setbacks in parking. We did do a traffic study because I know traffic is always an issue. If these properties were developed for a combination of office and retail, it would produce a significant amount of traffic than what the residential is that we have planned now, up to 21% decrease in the morning and a 47% reduction in evening peak hour treats. And this was based on, you know, the ITC studies that our traffic engineers done. And these are the standard numbers, so I mean, it actually will decrease the amount of traffic. Everyone says that, you know, getting out on the Coolidge is very difficult, but it would be more difficult if these were developed as commercial and retail spaces. Well, I guess one thing we did, one of the bigger things though is also there are three curb cuts that go to those residential units along Coolidge right now. With this development, those curb cuts are being removed, so that entire frontage now along Coolidge could be allocated for on-street parking if the city wanted to go that direction. One of our major benefits that we believe is our stormwater management implications that we're doing with this site. There are not codified engineering standards for Berkeley, so we followed the Oakland County recommendations for stormwater management. And even though this site is less than the one acre that they kind of draw their line at, we are still providing a 100-year detention underground, excuse me, and treating all of the stormwater, delaying the release into the existing combined sewer, so it's going to significantly reduce the impact on those systems right now. And that's, you know, it's a significant input that the developer is going to do, and it's going to help the residential folks in that area. We're also going to plan to do two additional fire hydrants. There's, I think the fire hydrants off of Coolidge down both Cambridge and Coolidge are pretty far east, so we're bringing them much closer. One is going to be just kind of on the one east side of the proposed building and one kind of on the corner of Coolidge and Cambridge. So additional fire safety for those. Here's the stormwater area. Both sides are going to be collected, roof and surface drainage brought over, treated, stored, and then delayed released into the existing combined sewer. The landscaping, I think we did a great job of providing a significant amount of landscaping in the area. And here's a photo of that. Particularly on the south side of the south building, there's a little pocket park, basically. There is a pathway that connects from Coolidge up and around into the area. There's a plan to be a small sort of wire picket fence, not wire, metal picket fence to kind of separate that and delineate the difference. It's a gate, but not locked, so the public could walk in there if they wanted to. A comment from the planning commission was to make that pathway not concrete, but so we went to, we're going to go with a crushed granite to make it pervious and removed a little bit of a, another little patio area that I had planned, but we turned that into a lawn area to also lessen the pervious or impervious area. Street trees, there's four existing trees you can see along Coolidge. There was some debate back and forth whether we should take them down and then help the city plant new ones or leave them up and whatever. But I think in the PUD agreement, there is language to provide funds for additional trees, whether those stay or go or however the city wants to work that. We also have three or four locations of public benching along the Coolidge frontage with some bike racks, some trash receptacles, things like that, so it makes it nice and easy. It really ties the building into the community walkability along that area. I guess that, then you can kind of see a rendered street view of the existing trees with some new plantings along the area, smaller vertical trees and grasses that really helps soften the first floor of the building. This slide shows kind of a sequence of what we presented to the planning commission and then with their comments. So the black and white was one of the first ones that we did. Then we were asked to come back or make some modifications previous to the last planning commission, and those comments are in red. So they wanted to see, to make sure that we were meeting all site distance requirements of access to and from the parking. The wall heights are six foot, except we lowered them down in a couple areas to allow sites from vehicles to not interfere with pedestrians crossing. Those were the red ones. And then after the planning commission approval, we, part of their recommendations or requirements for approval are now in the blue, which kind of call out that we replace the concrete paver with a crushed stone. The patio up there, you can kind of see on the very south side, I had two picnic tables. That area is gone, and it's now just lawn. The three, we had six parking spaces kind of in that north, north is to the left, by the way. So in the southern building, northeast corner, there were six spaces. We were asked to remove the bumper blocks from those and make those tandem spaces. So we've done that, or we will do that on the approved plans moving forward. And then there were two other spaces on the corner that when residents would be backing out, there was a chance that they could back out over the sidewalk along Columbia. So we removed those two parking spaces, made them green space, which is also a better area for snow storage during the winter. So functioning, it's going to be much better. And then the one other parking space, we had sort of an isolated one on the very east side of the south building. That is now going to be striped as no parking and help for access to the trash dumpsters that are in that area, and other maintenance vehicles can now use that if they needed to. So that covers those, and then I believe Wayne may wrap it up, or?
Joe? Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Peter. I'm going to bring it to a close here. Couple things that may have gotten glossed over. We have communicated directly with the three adjacent neighbors. Two of the three have accepted a landscaping credit to be documented, to landscape on their side of their property at our expense. We'll have an agreement in place pending approval. One of the neighbors has withheld, is not interested in the project being here, so, but that offer is still available and will be open to that neighbor. The parking ratio that we're coming in with is at, or depending where you ultimately land on your parking requirements, we're right there. I think we're at 1.35 vehicles proposed in this project, not taking into account the credit for bicycles, which we've not added that into that 1.35. We wouldn't build a project if we didn't think we'd have adequate parking for it. It's too big of an investment to have people go without the ability to park their car in or at their building. We know by modern standards and development and city planning, we're right there. We're just a little bit ahead of your approval process, but we think we accommodate that quite nicely. The traffic study that was mentioned is accurate. If we built what is allowed there today, we'd have significantly, we'd be creating significantly more traffic than what this project will produce. I think it was a 21% morning traffic reduction from what could be there and a 47% reduction in afternoon hours or rush hour times. So it's not comparing it to the duplexes that stand today, but if I followed city ordinance and went and built exactly what you'd allow, which me or someone else would do at some point, we think we've taken, the traffic is less of a burden than it will be given another project. In our downtime between our planning commission approvals, we heard a lot of people loud and clear. We got approval. We were scheduled to come to council. We backed off on our time and our dime to readdress the project. We pulled out the two primary concerns that we could address. One was the bridge going over Columbia. People just had a lot of heartburn over it. We heard that loud and clear, and we pulled that back. We had to go back and re-engineer the building and determine, you know, what's, how do we build it without the bridge? Because our initial design called for the bridge. That took some time, and we took off the rooftop decks. If you, you may have, may not have seen prior submissions, but there were rooftop decks across the whole top. There were loft apartments with walkouts on the roof. People had some issue with that, even though they wouldn't have, you wouldn't have been able to see them. We removed those as well and just put a full floor of additional units there to get to the same unit count of 57. So it's basically the same project, less the rooftops, unless the bridge. And we're comfortable building it as we're presenting it to you today. We think the bridge would have been kind of cool, but we listened to you loud and clear and got some good feedback on that. So I just want to highlight that. We think it's going to be a high-quality project. It supports the master plan. We've had tremendous community involvement, not only from DDA, chamber, residents, other business people. We think we've listened. Listen, this project's not going to make everybody happy. We know that, but we think, given the direction of Berkeley and your master plan and your vision for where the city is going, we think we're hitting it right on the head, and we're coming in with a project that addresses what you're looking for in the city. And as I said, we've had twice through the planning commission, DDA, city staff, DPS, DPW support, and I would appreciate your consideration as we go forward. And we're here to answer any questions that you might have, if you have any questions.
Thank you. I will open this up to council for questions of either Mr. Radeka, his team, or Ms. Kaplansky. So if you have questions that you would like clarification on, council member, head in.
Yeah, I have a few questions for Director Kaplansky.
One last thing. We've had a website up the entire time, thecolumbiaberkeley.com. We have received a lot of feedback, a lot of questions on that, and we were able to address those questions in a non-public forum and in a one-on-one way with residents that had concerns. It's been active since prior to our first planning commission meeting. We wanted to make ourselves available and answer questions. There have been a lot of feedback through that, and it's still up today and is current with the current presentation.
Thank you.
First is the deviation on the non-residential first floor use. So although we have to go by our current standards, our ordinance rewrite that proposed is that requirement is going away.
Correct.
Most likely.
Yes.
And so far as height of the building, it's the same height as what would be allowed by right now, whether it's?
Correct. 40 feet is what is allowed. It's measured to the midpoint of the roof. This is 40 feet at the midpoint of the roof.
Then as far as we know, parking, it's going to be assigned parking for?
All of the units will have at least one space assigned.
Okay. Then this sort of ties into our next agenda item, and, you know, I think one people, one thing that people are concerned about are, well, visitors are going to come and now, you know, park, you know, you know, fill up the neighborhood. But one of the proposed changes we're looking at is that the passes, there's a limit of 15 per month is what is, or per year is what is proposed for?
Right, so a little bit of preview of the next item. When we're talking about the temporary parking passes as part of that item, they would be limited to 15 per plate per year.
Yeah, so you wouldn't have a, you wouldn't be able to have a perpetual visitor that's there all the time, and also because we are not proposing any permitting for apartments. So apartments could not?
They could use the 15 per year per plate for the temporary passes, but would not, under the next item, be allowed to apply for, get an annual parking pass.
Yeah, and then the last thing, I know we can't enforce exactly where those visitors would park, but is Coolidge an option? Or do we, does our ordinance prohibit overnight parking with those passes on Coolidge?
So that's something that I think is worth a little bit of discussion. As it's written right now, it doesn't necessarily prohibit parking on Coolidge, but if the council were concerned about parking in the neighborhood streets, you could always ask the applicant direct, or ask tenants to direct visitors to Coolidge or put signage up to indicate where visitors should park. That would be really hard for us to enforce, so it would be much more of a suggestion than it could be enforced, but it would be something to remind people of where the council would like to see visitors park.
Yeah, and that will be a direction I'll be asking for. Thank you. That's all the question I have for you. I had one quick question for Attorney Crist. We had a couple of just small mistakes in the contract. Are they anything that need to be resolved now, or we have? Are they anything that need to be resolved now, or we have been able to resolve them before that comes back before us?
Thank you. Through the chair, I think that the two items that you noted would be addressed prior to the agreement coming back to council for final approval. It, and just, Ryan with you here, there is one reference to, to the ordinance section, which I believe is incorrect. And then secondly, I think there's a holdover reference to the bridge in the first page, which, but, but those would be corrected prior to final approval.
Okay. But we don't need to address them tonight? Okay. That's all my questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other council member?
Two things before public comments. One, the crushed concrete, I don't know who can answer this. Is this ADA compliant, strollers, wheelchairs? I'm just not familiar with the product.
Yes. The crushed granite is a, is a universally accepted ADA compliant material. It compacts nicely. It stays in its rails that you put down, and people can use that. Yes.
And then the other thing, I did, just in full transparency, consult with city administration. I did receive a contribution from the developer in 2019, not the most recent election, and he can speak for himself, but he didn't feel that it disqualified from a vote.
Thank you. Mayor Protam.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd also like to say the same thing, contact, or reaching out to the, the city attorney, that, yeah, developer did make a contribution to my campaign in 2019. That contribution was returned. And so I think it's just important, in the interest of full transparency, but like, like Councilmember Patterson said, I think Attorney Crist could, you know, share his, his thoughts on it.
Councilmember Black.
The developer did not make a contribution to my campaign. No. Mr. Wadika, curious, you said that you, you went out and spoke to people. What was your, what were the results of your engagement with the community? Did you do it by number? Did you have a certain, you know, block by block? Or, you know, how, how did you approach that, and what were the results of your engagement?
I walked down Cambridge, probably five or six houses deep, both sides, and the same on Columbia. And we had pretty favorable response from, I would say half, that were curious, and they know, they know that development's inevitable, I think was the question. They, they also, some of the comments I got was that would create a nice buffer with noise and lights from the street, provided we build what we say we're going to build. So I would say we, we haven't had anything extremely, we had a couple negative, very negative comments that were on, on social media, but directly to me, haven't had much other than in the public forum and the planning commission, we've, we've endured a few comments. But we took those constructively, as we have all of our comments with the, the neighbors. So I would say it's probably 50/50 in my walks. Not everybody's home. I went back a couple of times. But the, of the three neighbors that are directly adjacent to this, as I said, two are very favorable to the project. They see it enhancing the value of their property. And I think they also know we're a known commodity here. They, they see how we manage our properties up and down Coolidge and 12 Mile, and know that they can come to trust what we're going to build and how we're going to manage things. So I think there was some relevant, some relative comfort with who was going to develop the project. That's my impression.
Thank you.
Someone else may have a different impression, but.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Malani.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Also, did not get a campaign contribution, so I'm going to go with Clarence Flack there as well. So looking through the paperwork, can you confirm, it looked like there was 11 studio units, and then 46 one-bedrooms of various degrees of balconies? Is that correct?
I'll tell you that in just one minute. Do you have a count of 100? Okay, we'll, we'll bring that back to you in just a second.
Okay. So assuming those are the numbers that I pulled from there, I'm also working off our current parking ordinance, because there's no guarantees about what any changes will look like until those are approved, especially given our next agenda item and the way our inboxes look right now. We know that Berkeley takes its parking very seriously. I would be willing to concede that for studios, you're probably generally going to have one person living in these types of apartments. But the one-bedrooms, with your 77 parking spaces provided, if you're assuming at our current ordinance, the 46 units times two would require you to have 92 plus another 11 for those studio apartments. It's a shortage of about 26 spots. Even if we remove that down to one and a half parking spots per one-bedroom, which is one of the numbers being looked at for future parking ordinances, it's still going to put you several spots under, and then that leaves the whole visitor parking, like, where are these visitors parking? As someone who lives just a few blocks away, has many friends who live down that way, I know it's a big concern that they don't want to have the front of their homes, you know, filled with visitors parking, and I just, it feels like there's still a gap there that needs to be addressed.
Okay, happy to address that. We would not have brought this project forward under the current, if we thought that the current parking requirements was going to be adhered to. There's no way we would have proposed it. No project of any sort would get built there. Now, the current parking requirements are antiquated. I think that's commonly understood, which is why you've done the traffic study and revision the city and done the master plan in the way that you have. It's inconsistent with any surrounding community. Colson, Ferndale, Royal Oak, you name it, the parking requirements at two per, per unit are far exceed reality today in today's world. So if I was a betting person, I would bet that we're going to see a reduction in that requirement for good reason, not for our development, right? There is a, a real need for this type of housing and a practical approach to how you govern it in terms of parking. And I think that's what we're coming in based on. We also didn't take, your comments don't take into account that the planning commission has a 10% variance approval rate, rating or opportunity, which we didn't, was not applied to our parking at 1.35 vehicles. And actually, they reduced our parking. We came in with 80, and they reduced us by four, four spots in the last planning commission meeting. So I think planners are very close to the reality of what the project should have for parking, and we came away with four or less parking spaces than we had proposed. So I think if you rely on your planning commission to do their job, they adequately reviewed the site, they understand the, the current needs of, of parking for a development like this, and have voted twice in that regard in favor of the project. So I think to say that you have to govern it based on today, that's fine if that's where you're at, and I, I respect that. If we wait three or four months and come back, that won't be an issue. I guess we're a little bit ahead of where the city is in terms of your, your update and zoning ordinances and parking ordinances. But we've done that based on reasonable discussions with, from city planners, consultants, and city managers that we were going to be within a range of acceptability on this project. So we wouldn't be here today based on the, the now current parking requirements. I respectfully appreciate your comments. And also keep in mind, well, that'll all stop there. So there will be a total of 11 studios and 46 one-bedrooms, so I think that was your?
Okay. Yep. That was the assumption. So as a follow-up, some of the towns that you mentioned, they also have different overnight parking ordinances. So it's not comparing apples to apples when you talk about what our residential parking requirements are versus what we have as a city ordinance. I think that changes the, the playing field dramatically. What is the plan then, if you are to get to a point where you are still looking to fill openings in this place, and you've maxed out your allotted parking spaces?
I don't think that's possible. With one-bedroom and studios, we'll have 77 parking spaces for 57 units. Everyone will have one parking space assigned to them. If they have two vehicles, we have tandem spaces that they would be assigned to that would address the, the concerns of the residents.
So you're assuming that it's all going to be single people living there, with the exception of a handful of units?
Well, if you look at the Ivy as an example, that's basically what the occupants of the Ivy is, mainly single, single people in the Ivy. And I think we're going to attract this, a very similar clientele to the Ivy. If that's, and that just happened. I mean, they filled the Ivy in 90 days. They're building 20 more units in the back. I don't think their parking ratio is much different than ours is going to be based on this, and they're, they're fine. They've got plenty of space in their parking lot. So I'm just looking at the reality of what's actually happening here within a, you know, 50 feet of our project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any council member?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for the presentation and the information here, and of course, for your continued work with the staff. I, I trust the work that they've done to help ensure that the city's needs and requirements have been represented in, as the course of the conversation. Some weird detail things that just caught my attention is during the course of the presentation, just minutia type of things, but important. There was a conversation about the fire hydrants being relocated. I wasn't clear if they were going to be moved, or we're going to add new ones.
We're adding two new ones.
Adding two new ones, okay.
On the, on the east side of Coolidge, and currently there aren't any on the east side of Coolidge in those couple of blocks. We'll actually have two built into the, into the building, available, and will actually provide closer access for a fire department to get to, should there be a fire in the neighborhood, to get right down the street with a hose.
Great. Thank you. That's, that's very comforting, because I thought I heard the saying, you know, they'll be moved, and it's like, no. It's like, if anything, we're adding more service to the residents if this were to proceed with that. That's very nice. I'm curious also about those four existing trees. Is there some kind of criteria or something that we work with the city to make the decision whether or not they'll stay? I wasn't quite clear if you, if it was like, well, they're here today, and maybe they're going to come down, or is there a bit more of a definitive process?
It's very clear from the planning commission that they wanted us to include in the PUD, which has been negotiated in the PUD that we would work with public service, one of the departments, which, which department? With EPW.
EPW.
To maintain those trees and/or relocate them, or it's at the city's discretion at our expense, basically. So we'd like to maintain the, the trees. They're, they're mature. They need new surrounds around. We're going to need to redo some sidewalks and some grading around it. We'd like to enhance it. If we have to add, we will. And there's a call for an escrow in the PUD agreement, which we've agreed to.
Okay, great. So it, it sounds like you're willing to work with the trees as they are, or based on whatever the city decides? So it's kind of in the city's court about the trees? Okay, great.
And that's been negotiated in the PUD, and it was, it was clear in the planning commission meetings.
Yep.
And it's on the site plan.
Yep. Excellent. Thank you. And then just in terms of general timing, I know projects and funding and all sorts of things are really tough to kind of nail down on exact dates, but could you give us approximate timeframes of when, you know, if this were to move forward after second reading, when you may commence with the demo and the ground, you know, all that kind of? Could you give us an outline of the, of the timeline?
Oh, you know, the development timeline takes, takes some time, right? We've got to go into final drawings. We've got to bid the project. We have to, the demo is very, pretty simple. The site is bound, pretty balanced. There's not a lot of earthwork to do there. It's a pretty balanced site. All the utilities are there. So once we get through, if we, provided we get approval, we would then start bidding the project almost immediately. We have a number of builders and, and developers that would like to be here and work with us on the project, so there's no shortage of, of people who want to be involved. Funding the project's not, not an issue that we consider. We've got funding lined up for that. The build will probably take a year and a half to build it, once we put a shovel in the ground. So it's a long-term project. It's a pretty, pretty big investment for the area. So I don't know when we would start the, you know, when you start to, when you build something, every day you see progress once you're out of the ground.
Yeah.
You don't realize it take longer to get out of the ground than it did to, to take it from the ground up. So this has been, this has been a two-year process, just getting here today. So I will be thoughtful about the final design and have to bid it accordingly, and hopefully interest rates will move in our direction a little bit over time, but that's, we're not contingent on the interest rate market, and we're not seeking any federal or state funding either. This is privately funded project.
All right. Thank you. And then so in terms of, once we are working, you know, above the ground and all that kind of stuff, what kind of communication plans would be in place with the residents if there were to be a street closure or trucks on a certain time? Is there like a get-ahead-of-the-issue kind of plan in place to, to let folks know ahead of time that, hey, you know, we're going to be blocking half of the street for this time, and working with public safety to make sure that the, the fire trucks can still get through and all that kind of good stuff?
Our site will be constantly updated, one. But two, in the PUD, it calls for the, there's a process for closing a street, should we need to close a street, for tapping into sewers, wherever, there's a process that we'd have to go through with the building department, planning, and that's called foreign detail in the PUD. So we'd adhere to, you know, those guidelines. And I think that, I think there's posting and notice to the neighbors along those lines. But we're going to do everything we can to, you know, build a project that doesn't interrupt people's lives too much.
Right. Thank you. And you've demonstrated the willingness to reach out to the neighbors already, and I imagine that would continue if, you know, if there were to be any of those kind of potential disruptions or, or things, just, you know, in the spirit of being good neighbors, to, to let them know that this is coming up and that kind of stuff.
My office is right on the corner of the project, so we're not going anywhere.
So it's not a long walk for you to?
Right.
To get out there and do that. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Councilmember Black.
I don't know if this is a question, Kristen for you, or, or Mr. Wadika for you. So aside from knowing that Little Caesar's going to be really busy, what are some of the things or some of the other benefits to, you know, so communities that have put these units up, Kristen, what are some of the things, what are some of the benefits that, that those communities have, have felt right away? You know, so we talk about, you know, the title of this presentation is, is Moving Berkeley Forward. So if we look ahead to this, approving this, and this goes up, what are some of the benefits that we're going to see potentially?
Yeah, I can generally speak to having more feet on the ground in downtown is really the idea. So our master plan and our downtown design guidelines talk about how we can make the downtown, not that it already isn't very successful, but even more successful than it already is. And part of that is bringing additional residents to downtown. When we bring those additional residents to downtown, it's more opportunity for restaurants and retail and other businesses to see that foot traffic increase their sales, which breeds success upon success. So I can't speak to what benefits this particular project might have, but generally, what we look to is to increase the density in downtown so that we have more foot traffic and more successful downtown. Obviously, this has the tax-based part of it as well, which redevelopment of any parcel would contain, but it would increase the vibrancy of downtown.
Mr. Geiger.
Just one thing that I would add to that is, I think as council may be aware, it's very common, commonly discussed that the priority towards homeownership is not what it used to be. Now, that's not to say homeownership is not a desire. One other potential benefit of projects like these is it's a gateway for new residents to come into the city of Berkeley. You get them hooked on the community, now they're here looking for when they're ready to take that next step in their lives, whether it's family, or they want a yard and a dog, or whatever happens to be. It's a way to get your foot in the door, is another one of those anecdotal things, why a community might look for a project like this. And just the housing diversity, you don't have a lot of non-single-family options in the community.
Thank you. Any, any other comments?
No, sorry.
Just wanted to be sure. I, too, received a campaign contribution from Mr. Wadika in 2019. I want to believe it's because he recognizes good governance and wants to support that. I am in no way benefiting from this project should it be approved. I am in no way benefiting financially or otherwise. Thank you.
I'd like to address the campaign contribution. I, I also donated to Buchley, the K-9, the jaws of life. We go back 30 years of making donations from every possible civic organization that's come to, come before us, and I frankly appreciate the work you do as council people. And if a $250 donation helps you buy some yard signs and gives you some extra support in your campaign, I'm happy to do that, because I appreciate what you do. And I don't expect anything in return for that, believe me. And I, and if you notice, those, those contributions were in 19. There's been an election since then, and we did not make those donations in the last, most recent election, when this was going up for consideration. All right. So I just want to address that. We're not looking for favors. We think we've got a, a very valuable project here. We stand on our own, we stand on our own reputation. We're confident in our, in our history here, and I just want to address that to you personally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm opening public comments for this agenda item. Okay, I'm opening public comments for this agenda item. Come up to the microphone, state your name and city of residence.
My name is Mo Sherekin. I live on the 3500 block of Cumberland. I'm a 34-year resident of the city of Berkeley. I own a number of properties in Berkeley and Royal Oak. I am an attorney licensed in Michigan in the state of Pennsylvania. I have done considerable amount of real estate development in my career. And I am generally for this project. I think you guys have done a good job. And I think your architects have done a good job of, of designing it. I'm a very big fan and have been since-
Mr. Sherekin, please, Director Cummins to the chair.
Sorry.
I know it's tempting you-
That's fine. I'm a very big fan of having the parking underneath the building. I think that that's the way that most developments are going. The first building I built was in 1986 that had parking underneath the building. I think we were ahead of our time, so I'm very much for that. My only concern is the parking, and I'm not saying that there's not enough parking. What I'm saying is, is def, is how the parking is, is situated in terms of the compact spaces. And so this is a, more of a question because I couldn't find it in the documentation. What is the height of the, what is the height of the building for going into the, into the parking spaces?
So, we can follow up with you on that, but we're not engaging in a discussion.
That's fine. So my concern is about the height going in because there are a lot of small vehicles now, but there's also more, there are larger vehicles than that. My other comment is that with respect to parking, I own a number of condominiums and they are assigned spots in those. And I will tell you, and this is obviously anecdotal, but most of the reserved spots don't get taken up in one or two-bedroom apartments. So, but there are 23 extra. And so they're almost at 1.5. So I don't think that's that big of a deal. The property on, that was developed that's similar to this one on 12 Mile, every time I drive by, my wife says, that's civic improvement. And so this is better than what's there right now. I know that those are his properties. I'm looking forward to him getting rid of him. He will become my competitor in the, in the rental market in Berkeley. But I welcome him because I'm tired of hearing about the housing crisis. People deserve a place to live. Berkeley's a great place to live, let's bring him in. I want to comment about the parking stuff, stuff later, too, so you're going to call me back about it.
Mr. Sherekin, any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Tom Stathopoulos. I live in Catalpa. I'm new to this meeting. And I find it interesting that we've been told that adding all, adding 57 units is going to lead to a 21% reduction in daytime traffic and a 47% reduction in rush hour traffic. I don't know if you cross Catal, if you cross Coolidge at all as pedestrians, but with this road diet, it takes forever to cross and there's a lot of traffic. So we're replacing six residences, three duplexes, with 57 residences, okay? 57, six. And we're told traffic will go down 21% and 47%. My next comment, are they going to allow pets in this apartment complex? We already have a dog poop problem in Berkeley. So these people are going to live in apartments, they're going to have their cute little dogs, and I don't think they're going to be as diligent as homeowners who have houses who are sensitive to the fact that, I don't think it's right to leave my dog poop in somebody else's home. If you don't have a yard, it's, it's annoying, but you know, it's okay, people can deal with it. It's not a big deal. That's the prevailing mentality of people who leave their dog poop all over the place. So there should be no pets allowed in this place, or the city of Berkeley needs to jack up their penalties, euthanize pets, you know, to solve the problem. But I just find it fascinating that those lots, you know, this sounds all well and good, I'm new to the game, but like I said, I don't know how traffic goes down when you basically multiply the number of dwellings by 10. Those duplexes probably have one or two people in them. And a lot of those apartments, I suspect money's tight, they're going to have two people living in a one-bedroom because they've got to make ends meet. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hello, everybody. I'm Paul Jordan. I live in Berkeley. I'm spitballing this. I wasn't really expecting to speak on it, but here we go. I'm coming at this from a layman's view. And in my view, they didn't meet the requirements for the PUD. These lots are developable, develop, yeah, they're able to be built on. It may not be the project that they want to do, but they are, they are buildable. There are existing structures on those lots. My other concern goes to, and somebody can clarify this for me, for the public space, the green space, does that mean that I'm going to be able to walk over there and have a picnic? Or is that, that just for the people who are in the apartments? Last thing, and this will stick with me, the parking requirements, I'm a little gray on, as I understood, what the planning commission was talking about was like 1.35 spaces per unit. Nobody drives 1.35 cars. You either drive one or you drive two. So I think that the parking shortage is going to be an issue. Thank you very much. And I'll be back up here in a second with notes and everything.
Great.
Good evening to this honorable body. First, let me apologize for my more casual appearance. I looked fancier earlier, but I sweat through it in this sweltering day. I'm Mike McGinnis, Executive Director of the Berkeley Downtown Development Authority, 338 Coolidge. It, the presentation alluded to it, but the Board of Directors for the DDA did unanimously pass a resolution in support of this proposed planned unit development in the vicinity of Coolidge, Columbia and Cambridge. And I just wanted to elaborate on that other question, that question that was asked by Councilman Black about what benefit does it also bring? For many of us who traverse that stretch of Coolidge, it's identified in the downtown master plan as a gateway south. So like, think of the gateway of coming into downtown Berkeley. And there's certainly a little discordant and awkwardness of some duplex, single-family ranch duplexes with a big yard across from the beautiful former La Salette, which is now the Ivy Lofts, but there's the Durst lumber. It, it creates this wonkiness in terms of our gateway and welcoming into the downtown, in terms of the aesthetic, in terms of the Berkeley vibe. And I think that the proposal definitely enhances that ambiance. But I'm really interested in the PUD's inclusion of streetscape improvements. If you are a student walking to and from Berkeley High School, whether you do have a Little Caesar's pizza hot and ready in your hand or not, there aren't really adequate trash cans, trash receptacles right now. The benches that the DDA has funded work, but they're not, you know, high-end elegant and they're, they are pretty stretched out. I want the residents and the shoppers and the visitors to downtown Berkeley, when they're walking along that stretch in Thurothor, to feel they're in a beautiful, enhanced and comfortable space. So that involves landscaping, that involves seating, that involves bike infrastructure, that involves green space to break up, you know, sort of the options. But it also involves receptacles. So I'm really glad that the presentation I called out, that they will be installing receptacles because I think that is really needed. And I've heard from residents, I know some of you have shared with me, residents are saying, we'd like some more places to, to throw things away. There's some old vestiges of receptacles like by Little Caesar's and the, and the ivy that gets overflowed. So again, mundane, but I see those amenities and benefits for people that are walking along Coolidge. It will make the stretch of Coolidge not only more harmonious and hospitable for current and future businesses, even if it's not right there, it makes it more attractive for our downtown. But more importantly, those visitors and those residents in the vicinity, that they can have a beautiful, elevated, well landscaped and well-tended space that feels more a connected Coolidge corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Closing public comment?
Madam Mayor, we did have a public comment via email.
Sure.
Joel Olfert via email says the ideal development should be scaled down in size and meet proposed zoning ordinances.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions from council? Ms. Patterson, please call the roll on M. 6024.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, didn't see.
Yeah, I have a, a lot.
Oh, okay.
So, especially because I think we need to, to do this correctly, we need a very specific formatted motion. So, but yeah, I want to address a couple of the comments that were made. The, the reduction in traffic, I think, is compared to retail. And it's compared to what the possibility could be if they put in retail, which they're allowed by rights. It's not a reduction of what's there now. You know, there's, the traffic study, there will be some increase in traffic, but I don't think it'll be significant. About parking, so when I was on the Parking Steering Committee and, and I've continued some afterwards, I was curious, what is the real-world data in Berkeley? And I, several times would go out, two, three o'clock in the morning and do counts at our apartments in the city to see what are, you know, what, you know, not what does some manual say, what does, what are we actually seeing in Berkeley? And for complexes that have all one-bedroom units, now I can't know the vacancies, so there may be vacancies inside, but they were typically around 1.25 cars per unit. So this is anecdotal. I can't say that this is official, but you know, repeated counts, you know, showed me that I think this is going to be sufficient parking based on the real-world data that we have in Berkeley. I think it's tight, but, but I think it's doable. Some of the standards, like we're asked about open space, our current ordinance isn't clear whether it is open to the public or private use. And one thing I want to recognize is that the people that live here are not going to be outsiders. They're going to become our friends, our neighbors and, you know, other Berkeley citizens. So I don't like thinking them as some other just because they're a part of this project. So, you know, when we look at the standards, we have to compare it to our current ordinance. I did want to ask for a couple of conditions, perhaps. Looking at the landscaping, the neighboring landscape, per the contract, we have no warranty for them. But often through no fault of anyone's own, new plannings fail, you know, just some percentage fail. And I wondered if you would be amenable to a one-year warranty on, you know, the neighboring, the credits to the neighbors, just because it could be significant landscaping and it could be out of their price range to be able to replace those if it fails within that one year. But I don't want you to have to be on the hook of it forever. So, you know, there would be an end if he-
Sure.
We'll have a warranty from our landscape, our landscapers that install the project, the, the planting. So I have no issue with that.
Okay.
We'll hold our installers accountable.
Yeah. And then, one other concern we had was with, you know, visitors. And I know we can't make the, this just isn't practical to be binding, but if you would be amenable to a condition that there's signage that requests visitors and deliveries to park on Coolidge, you know, just directing them there, not, you know, we can't require it, we can't mandate it, but, you know, strongly encourage it.
Is that, is that taking into account, is that considering parking is, overnight parking is allowed on Coolidge in the future?
Yeah, if, I think for this to work, we would, you know, I would like, I would rather visitors be parking on Coolidge-
Right.
Than parking in the neighborhood.
It's a great point. So, so when we, when we clean up the three parking, the three driveways, it's not only going to calm the traffic, cars won't be backing in and out of Coolidge from, from the current duplexes, but it'll add back about 12 parking spaces in front of our project is what we estimate. So if you're allowing overnight parking in Coolidge, then it would accommodate 12 more res, more visitors.
I guess that's a question for staff. I don't know if we allow overnight parking on Coolidge.
But if you wanted us to sign it accordingly, we'd be happy to do so.
Yeah. So, I don't know if, I don't know, maybe Director Young could tell us if there's any problems with overnight parking on Coolidge. And these would be for visitors with those up to 15-day passes. This wouldn't be, you know, long-term things.
I can, I can address that.
Sir.
I, I think some of what's being asked, I'm not sure we can answer that right now. It's going to depend on ultimately where the parking ordinance goes long-term and if there are any restrictions. I mean, the fact of the matter is, it is a public street. And you will have to determine if any changes move forward as we establish policy, will these temporary passes be allowed to be used only on local streets? Will it be major and local streets? Will it be, I mean, we, we'll be talking about, you know, snow emergencies and all that stuff, too. But to my knowledge, unless Lieutenant or Sean can say otherwise, I don't think we have anything if, if-
I could say, historically in the past, it's been, because of the road diet, traditionally that's never been even an option. So before the road diet, we never had any parking on Coolidge. And now it hasn't been addressed. So it's clearly something that's been addressed through this.
Thank you.
So theoretically, it could be a, be something that could be done.
Okay. So maybe a conditional, conditional, that if we allow overnight parking on, well, yeah.
Can we just say a conditional, condition to consider if allowed? That would clean up, I think, what you're trying to say.
If, if parking is allowed overnight, we would clearly sign the, the project to indicate that any overnight guests should just stay on, on Coolidge. And we can also put that in our leases to assure that the residents know that that's a request of any of their guests. We're happy to do that. Again, it's got to make sense for the project and we want there to be ample parking.
Yeah, just, so I like, I like the idea of the signage, even just for daytime visitors, right? Even setting aside the, the nighttime, I think having the, setting the mindset that, hey, you know, if you're, plus you're that much closer to get your little slice of Little Caesar's and that kind of stuff, too, right? You know, so anyway, I, I like the idea of, in general, again, we can't enforce or require, but guide folks to leverage the, the public parking that's available on the, on Coolidge, especially now that it's more safe for pedestrians and bicycles and things like that. Where that can be encouraged, I think that'd be, that'd be a positive.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Geiger?
No, go ahead.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
No, 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 I was just-
No, it's, it's, I was just going to say, I mean, I think as council, I, I think there's a motion on the floor. So as you're considering whether, whether to amend it, I mean, some of the things that are being discussed is, okay, do we need to put this into a condition? Or is this something that, look, yeah, well, I mean, most of your big trucks, deliveries, things like that are going to be hitting Coolidge anyway for their route or what have you. The Amazon driver might be a little different. So as you get ready to amend a motion, if that's the direction that things are going, just consider which, how you want to word that. Because putting a condition for a what-if-
Yeah.
-may not be something you want to put into a motion.
Councilmember Baker?
Yeah, thanks. Certainly, I'm no parliamentarian, but, you know, I'm wondering, since we've already identified that there are a few other cleanup things that are going to happen between first reading and second reading, perhaps this could be addressed through that same process with assurances coming back that, you know, here, this thing we talked about, here's how, here's where it landed, this thing here we talked about, here's where it landed, and then bring it back to second reading. I mean, again, I'm not sure if this, you know, if this constitutes, it must be a thing, or if it's enough that can be worked with staff and then bring it back.
Well, that would be separate. That's the parking one. There's no first and second reading on this, I don't think. This is a, an approval?
Okay, this is the approval, yeah.
Yeah. This is just the PUD.
Thanks.
There will be, the, the second thing that comes to us is the agreement.
Correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. That's what I thought.
So, so I'll, I guess before I read this very long proposed motion, that's pretty much mirrors the Planning Commission's motion.
So I think-
Is it necessary?
I think from a parliamentary standpoint, we need to retract the original motion if we're going to start fresh. Is that correct?
Friendly amendment?
Yes, if there's a friendly amendment to that or to allow it to be withdrawn, because there's already a motion on the table.
Correct.
I made the motion, so.
Yes.
Or alternatively, you have to entertain that motion.
The more parliamentary question is, is it necessary to go through all the conditions for the PUD? Or do we just need a yes or no vote on what we already have?
Well, I'm not sure I understand.
Okay.
Through the Chair Councilman, I'm not sure if you're thinking of adding additional conditions beyond the rec, the conditions recommended by the Planning Commission?
So the Planning Commission motion has, you know, findings of the deficiencies and, you know, that it meets certain sections and so forth. Do we need to be in that level of detail in this body?
Well, I, I think to articulate the conditions, it, it should happen at some point so that staff knows about it before they, because there was some talk about a final agreement coming back with all the exhibits included and cleaned up for council's final review.
Yeah.
So, you know, I defer to, to really the mayor, how you wish to proceed on, on the motion that's currently before-
Mr. Geiger?
If, if I'm hearing the question, from what I think I'm hearing, I would make the motion contingent upon or tie it to the same findings and conditions that are outlined in the Planning Commission meeting of whatever the date is. And if there's anything additional, then add that into it as well.
Okay. I'm prepared to amend my motion. We'll see if it's friendly. Councilmember Black was the second. So, motion to approve PUD 0123, the Columbia, with the- So, motion to approve PUD 0123, the Columbia, uh, with the same ordinance deviations as found by the Planning Commission in their May 28th, 2024 recommendation for approval with the following conditions, the conditions stated in the Planning Commission's May 28th, 2024 recommendation for approval, and, uh, a one-year warranty for any landscaping provided to residents at 2244 Cambridge, 2245 Columbia, and 2246 Columbia. Signage requesting deli, uh, visitors, uh, to park on Coolidge. And with the findings that the minimum of three of seven public benefits listed in Section 138533 have been met, including the project provides extensive landscaping beyond the site plan requirements, the project provides open space or public, or a public plaza, and the project provides efficient consolidation of poorly dimensioned partials, and the standards for approval in Section 138537 are met.
Councilmember Black, are you good with that?
Just point of clarification, does the language need to be specific to visitors and deliveries? Or just?
I would put that in there because that was my understanding. I would just say and deliveries and.
Okay. Good.
Good.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion or questions from council? I'm looking at all of you. I'm seeing nothing. Ms. Patterson, please call the roll on M6024.
Valani?
No.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. M6024 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, sorry. I just, Ms. Patterson, please read item number six.
Item six, ordinance number O dash, oh, 07 dash 24. Matter of approving the first reading of an ordinance to amend Section 106 dash 36, damage and obstruction prohibited generally, Section 122 dash 92, established use of off-street parking spaces, and Section 122 dash 94, parking in residential districts between certain hours, and add Section 122 dash 96, presumption from ownership, Section 122 dash 97, vehicle abandonment, and Section 122 dash 98, on-street parking prohibitions of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to update the policies and procedures for on-street parking and par, uh, and parking in municipal lots.
Is there a motion to approve O0724?
So moved.
Motion may be Councilmember Henon?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Black. Mr. Patterson?
Yes, we're going to pull up a, some slides here. And that's where my notes are, so hang tight.
Here, you know what? Oh, okay.
Uh, so thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate, uh, the opportunity to provide you an update during this first reading. As you know, uh, we had some very preliminary conversations at a work session two months ago or so. I'll put some information out there on, on kind of what was, what we were looking at. Uh, again, tonight, this is just the first reading. You're not adopting anything tonight. Uh, so myself, Community Development Director Kristen Kapolanski, our Operations Lieutenant Jordan Kobernick, and Katyn Flora, Director of Communications, will walk you kind of through what this, uh, potential set of ordinance amendments would, um, do. Uh, one thing that I was reminded by when we were reading off this agenda item is we are not just talking about, um, I, it's in quotes here, like double A quotes, lifting the overnight ban. Because as I think council knows, and I think the broader community knows, there is no overnight ban on parking here. There is a ban of parking from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. So the, what that means is, again, everybody in this vi, in this city with a car could park on the street all hours of the day, all hours of the night, except for 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. We are not talking about lifting those restrictions. As you will hear, we are talking about some possible amendments to that. Um, we are not asking for approval tonight, as again, this is a first reading. This is the first time you are seeing this and considering this as a whole. Um, whether or not we're ready to move forward with a second reading and possible considerations, if there is more work to do on a section, those are all part of the conversation. Parking, what is allowed today, I just kind of walked over, or walked through that. Again, anybody can park on any public street at any hour of the day except for 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. Uh, our recommendations that we're going to be walking through, um, I'll leave it to the team to kind of walk, uh, to talk a little bit more about how we got here. Uh, a lot of this comes out of the 2023 parking study, but also what our staff have been working through for years and trying to, uh, enforce and deal with some of the circumstances that come up with what's on the books today. No, our recommendations have nothing to do with multifamily. Um, the only units that the recommendations on potential parking passes, if you will, um, only addresses single-family users, um, multifamily to the extent of a two-family household, so a duplex, for example. A multifamily, multi-unit, like we just heard tonight, would not be applicable or would not be eligible for any of these, particularly the annual, um, parking pass, which seems to be where we're getting the most questions and comments. Um, our current system is outdated, it is very inefficient, and it is not working. Um, regardless with some of what we're hearing, um, we're talking with the people that are actually responsible for trying to enforce this, and they will walk you through some of the challenges that we are having. The fact of the matter is, household patterns and vehicle uses are very different than in 1959, when this notice was first put in the paper, um, from City Manager Johnston, um, that there was going to be no parking on the streets except for 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. Just some of the data, um, this is some of the things that we're thinking about as we're preparing for this discussion with you all. Um, first and foremost, I hate to say back in the day, but back in the day, there were a lot fewer homes that did not have, or there were a lot more homes that did not have cars. Uh, back in 1960, um, about 22% of homes, um, did not have any cars, uh, in the city of Burke, or excuse me, that might be broader US data, I'd have to defer. But, um, today, only eight and a half percent of homes do not have at least one vehicle. Um, again, increase in multi-vehicle households, you know, um, cars are no longer a luxury. They're an expectation in a lot of households. Unfortunately, a lot of homes, they rely on public transportation and all that, but in many of your homes today, um, you know, almost 60% have at least two cars, uh, in a household. Back in 1959 and 60, when this, uh, ordinance was first put into place, only 22% of homeowners or residents had more than one vehicle at home. Again, just some, just some data, um, as you guys are kind of thinking about, well, what is the potential scale of something like this? Um, looking at, in the city of Berkeley, we have 72, just over 7,200 housing units. This does include multifamily. We only have about 18% of our households that have three vehicles or more. And when you get up there at the higher level, less than 1% have more than five vehicles. So that would suggest that about 1,300 unit, housing units in the whole of City of Berkeley have more than three vehicles. At this point, I'm going to hand it over to staff, and I will jump back in, um, when we get into, um, some discussions around hardships and the potential for an annual, uh, parking pass.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I just want to bring everyone a little bit up to speed on how we came to tackle some of these issues. So, as our interim city manager mentioned, we did have a parking study that was adopted in August 2023 by this body. And one of the issues that really rose to the top, that was never intended to be a focus of the parking study, was overnight on-street parking and enforcement. So, the people that came out to talk to us at our public engagement sessions and participated in our online surveys really talked about, one, wanting to see the illegal parking enforced as much as possible. And then, secondly, there was about two-thirds of the comments that really liked the, um, ban on parking for those four hours of the night. And then there was another third who said, but I really have too many cars, or this is the reason why this doesn't work for me, and we need to figure out a solution. So that's why this became a point of the parking study. And the parking study recommended that the ban, quote-unquote, still stay in place. So to have no parking for a period of time overnight. But to also make sure that that's enforced regularly, because that came through so loud and clear in those comments. And then, secondly, to make getting an overnight parking permit easier for residents, and we'll get to a little bit later, the process for that now. Um, but in this day and age, we shouldn't have to drive all the way to public safety to fill out the carbon copy sheet and get your copy to stick in the windshield. So, to summarize a little bit, we need to enforce that parking prohibition during those hours, but recognize also, and, and Jordan will get into this in a moment, that life safety calls from public safety are always going to trump parking and illegal parking concerns. So keeping that in mind, we need to be able to adjust to allow that house, to allow households that are functioning now in the 21st century to be able to, to do that in our community. We want to be a welcoming community, a growing community that accepts all types of households. And also, that we're recommending a compromise. So we are not proposing that the overnight parking prohibition be removed, but we're instead looking at options so that those who have a hardship can come forward to the city and have that addressed and remain here in our community. And I'm going to turn it over to, um, Lieutenant Kobernick to talk about some of the public safety challenges.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I apologize if I bump around. There's so many moving parts to this project that it all kind of ties together, so I, I apologize if I jump back and forth. But I think it's important to kind of know where we start, where we come from, what the process is. You know, I've been doing this 16 years and, and driving around at night, and the current process is somebody would come into the station and they get a parking pass. Yes, it's carbon paper. I tried to show a new guy the other day, and he'd never seen it before. Um, so the, the process is clearly antiquated. We don't have a good tracking mechanism to know how many passes. I'm going to tell you right, right now that, you know, under Director Kane, we've moved so far with technology, and, and really, what I'm learning about the technology is really it's the data, it's, it's the data you put into it, obviously, is what you're going to get out of it. And so part of this new software we'll see in a minute does that for us, and it makes it easier for the residents as well. Just looking at, um, from a, you know, public safety perspective, obviously, this isn't a priority in terms of OWIs on the street or any kind of in-progress calls. Um, that's going to take priority. I can give you just an estimate, if a drunk driver's arrested at 2:00 AM, the arresting officer, without a blood draw, without a search warrant, is going to be an hour and a half into that, uh, the time they're processed, they do the data master, they're an hour, hour and a half to two hours in. The backup officer is going to be sitting on the impound for at least 30 to 40 minutes. Um, that leaves us one, one other officer potentially to issue citations for that night. Just a quick, and again, this was just a, a small sample set, but, um, within the last week, we, we did a count of vehicles on the roadway. Um, and it was within seven cars on both a weekday and weekend. And I would be the first to tell you that I thought the weekend would be far more. Um, but it wasn't. And kind of using those numbers, there's about 13, 13 hours of personnel time, um, to enforce that many, at five minutes apiece, which I think is probably understated, with 60 miles of surface street. And, um, again, that's stopping, that's running the plate, that's looking in the window to make sure, um, they can actually see the pass and everything else, too. So, again, it's multifaceted, this entire thing, and it'll, something will trigger me, and I'll, I'll say something else in a minute. But, um, really, it's just antiquated. Someone, someone has to leave their home, come to the station to get a pass. It pulls our dispatchers away from their primary function, which is dispatching, um, to come up, fill it out, and, and give it back to them. The other issue with, is we really, it's surrounded with the ordinance, you know? It's the most simplistic ordinance ever. No parking, two to six. That's it. So it doesn't say we can issue passes. It doesn't say we can issue passes. Nobody has a problem when you issue them a pass, but when you deny them passes because they're abusing the system arbitrarily, you know, at 30 days, 60 days, whatever it is, um, you know, when I started here, you'd just say they're done. In 2024, I don't think that's appropriate, they should be backed by ordinance. So that's, again, why the ordinance piece ties into it. Trying to think what I left out of this. And I think it's important, too, it's, it's, we're supportive of not having cars over the street, and nobody's saying that. I think what we're saying is, I mean, as residents, too, we, we recognize that, that we don't want cars over, we don't want junk cars on the street, we don't want all these things, but we're also reasonable. And we know what the size of Berkeley is, we know how, how big the lots are. So it's finding that middle ground of people, because we get phone calls. I'll get phone calls from people that, hey, I had a, I have a teenage son who's, this is going to put us at four cars, what am I going to do? And I don't have a good answer for him. And I know people that have moved out of Berkeley because of the ordinance. So again, it comes from a place of reasonableness and trying to do what's right by the residents. In a perfect world, public safety, I, I think Director Young would say the same thing, no cars on the street are the best to do snow and do service. But I think this really touches a lot of different points that, over 16 years of driving these streets, is addresses some of those frustrations.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to walk you through for a moment just a, a brief overview of what our compromise is. So this came out of a staff implementation team, which was one of the recommendations of the parking study, to have this parking committee that was pulled from all different members of different departments. So DPW was represented, myself from Community Development, we had representatives from Communications, IT, um, Public Safety. We really tried to bring in everyone that we could to try to cover all of our bases. And we came up with this proposed solution that includes two main components. One is online permitting for temporary overnight parking. So we alluded before to the 15 passes per plate per night, and we'll get into the details a little bit later. And the other is the yearly residential overnight parking permit, and this would be one per household. Now, looking at enforcement and how we want to, to ratchet that up a little bit, the cost of a ticket for overnight parking right now is $10. That's the cheapest in the area. It would be, go up to $50, which matches other parking tickets, with the understanding that should you be issued a $50 ticket because you cannot fit the car in your driveway, you have this outlet to buy the annual pass. So we're not saying you're going to be issued a $50 ticket every night. We're directing people, but you have the option to buy this pass. Or if it's a more temporary situation, you have these temporary parking permit options. I know the idea of a hardship test for an annual pass has been brought up. I do want to caution that this would require more staff resources. Um, so just to put that out there, staff thought about this as part of our committee as well, and we thought that it would be a good idea in, in terms of just starting this out, to have participants indicate why they're, why they're requesting this annual pass, and we could track that data to determine what the reasons are, what is the most common reason, and also what are things maybe we didn't think of. We feel like these recommendations would allow people who really need to park on the street overnight to do so, but also make enforcement easier for public safety, because they would be able to see the little yearly parking tag hanging from the, um, rearview mirror when they drive by. It would have a reflective coating, so you wouldn't need to stop. They would have a printout of the license plates that have temporary parking passes. And we're hoping that that additional cost of the $50 would encourage people to use those options instead of park illegally on the street overnight.
So, uh, there's been a lot of talk about the hardship test, um, and what does that look like? And as you all know who were at the, um, uh, the study session, I'll just admit, I'm not a huge fan of creating process for process sake, but I certainly understand, um, why and how that would come into play here. Um, the concerns that we would have as staff is making sure that we have that very clearly spelled out of what or how a hardship is defined. And I'll walk you through, um, at least some thoughts that go through our mind as why that is difficult, uh, to achieve. Um, first and foremost, we were asked, okay, what's the estimated staff time on this? Part of the challenge is, with some of the communities where this is done, the, the community fabric, the, the lots, the, the design, the layouts, the size of, uh, driveways are very different. But we did reach out to Huntington Woods. Um, they said on, on average, it's about 50 hours a year, a year, is that correct? It was 50 hours, that's all I remember. They were, they were looking at roughly 20 minutes per.
20 minutes per investigation.
20 minutes per investigation. Knowing that our circumstances are probably going to generate more inquiries than what they have there, also, being a, in a first year, it's going to take us some time to kind of learn and work through this, I'm thinking, okay, it's probably at least 50 to 100 hours. And do we have the staff for that? No, with an asterisk. What I mean by that is, we have staff that can do that work, but that is more work that they have to get done within their set period of time. So as long as there's an understanding that wherever we assign this, there's going to be a given and a take, we'll make. to be a give and a take, we'll make whatever council ultimately decides to do work. So, for example, if it were to fall to the building department, we might not be as quick on getting inspections, or we might not be able to be as responsive to residents that have an inquiry about wanting to put in a shed, or whatever happens to be. If it was going to be code enforcement, that's less places we're going to be able to do a code enforcement visit and things to look at there. I think what's more complicated for me, as someone that has to oversee this whole operation, or as someone, if it falls to a police officer, which is where most of this stuff is falling right now, is how do we define a hardship? Like, some of it's fairly easy to do, right? You're a house, you know what, you're a classic car collector, your garage is full of two beautiful classic cars, you got a number of young drivers in the household, your driveway's full, you need to park on the street. Okay, I can look at that from a reasonable standpoint and say, you know what, that's not a hardship that you're storing your classic cars in the garage, which is free versus a storage unit, okay? That one I can get. But you're in an older community, you have a lot of single-car garages, how do we say that, in a small house, say you're a family, you have four children, you're in a 900-square-foot bungalow, you have a single-car garage, all your kids' stuff is filling up the garage, the bikes, the toys, all the other stuff, and you can't fit everything on the driveway? How am I to say that that's not a hardship? You know, I want you to be able to raise your family here and have them grow and go to our schools and all that. So, it gets to be a tough, very subjective place for staff to be. And, you know, we've seen a lot of these comments about, well, just tough, make it work. Unfortunately, that's not always easy to do when you work and live in a very diverse community that has very diverse needs. Can you go to the next slide, please? So, we've tried to take a stab at, okay, what could some of these hardships look like? So, as council's considering, if we're going to allow an annual pass, and if we're going to make it hardship-based, what might be some of these things that would be, that we could look at? The number of licensed drivers in a home. Relatively easy to look at. You have some things, like, again, if they're a student or the in-laws moved in, maybe they're snowbirds. There might be some areas where we might not be able to look up the address and check and verify things, but that might be one. Handicap accessibility. Maybe you're in a house wheelchair accessible, you need to have that extra space in your driveway to get into your van, and you can't be shuffling cars. Okay, that one's probably something we could look at. The length and width of a driveway. How many cars can you physically fit there without blocking a sidewalk? That's the next one. You have a work vehicle in the driveway, okay? Something we can maybe take into consideration. One we started talking about today that gets really tricky when you have these small sites is home construction. We have, we want to encourage home renovations. We want to encourage investments in a home, but if we can't give them a space to put a dumpster, what are we supposed to do in those circumstances to keep our city fresh and clean and investing in and not falling behind? The size of a garage. And the, whether or not there's an apron there. I mean, those are some other things that could possibly come up. Go ahead.
So, this just summarizes our recommendations related to the temporary and annual passes. The temporary permit would move to an online system. You could sign up from the comfort of your home, or your visitors could sign up from the comfort of your home, so that'd be much more convenient. I do want to add a little bit of an asterisk here. If anyone's not comfortable using the online system, they would always have the option to come into public safety and ask for help doing that. This would be 15 times per plate per year. So, all of your visitors would be allowed 15, you would be allowed 15, et cetera. The annual pass is one per home per address. We have examples here. This would hang from the rearview mirror. It's reflective, so the police can see it when they drive by, they would not need to get out of the car. This would not be available for multiple-family residents excluding duplexes. Duplexes could purchase this. The proposed cost that staff has thrown out there is $300. This is based on research done in other communities who operate systems that are not exactly what we're proposing, but that are similar. So, that's where we hold that number from. And then Nate had gone through some of the reasons why we might be looking at both of those pass options. Is it okay if I pass this around? So, this shows our current parking passes. They look like they came onboard in 1959 along with the ordinance. A real pretty script there. This would be the new online software. It's mocked up now. I know you can't see all of the details because they're very small, but residents would be required to enter their plate number, their name. There's some acknowledgements that they'd have to agree to that would let them know you can't park during snow emergencies, et cetera, et cetera. So, these are some of the benefits of our new online system. Right now, as Lieutenant Copernick alluded to, it's not easy for public safety to track who's parking on our streets. This would allow everyone to track who's temporarily parking and also who has the annual parking passes, so we would know who is here. This would also allow, with the sign-up for the temporary and annual passes, us to send notifications in case of snow emergencies and leaf pickup. So, people would be required to provide an email and a phone number, and we could send out mass text messages to let people know, there's a snow emergency, you have to move your car, leaf pickup is on your street, whatever it happens to be, you need to move your car for those things. Dispatchers right now are using their time up to fill out the carbon copy passes. This would allow them to focus on emergency calls. And then, we talked previously about how this would help with police enforcement as well. So, what is before you tonight is a city code amendment, and I just briefly want to go over what that's codifying. As Lieutenant Copernick said, right now, we have the simplest ordinance ever, one sentence, no parking between 2 and 6. We're not only tackling some of these on-street parking issues, but we're really trying to make sure that we're cleaning up the parking ordinance, too, and make sure that we have a strong legal footing for issuing these passes. So, this would codify the issuance of the temporary parking permits, as well as the annual passes, and make sure that we have the ability to issue those. There are a couple other cleanup items that are tied in here that we wanted to take care of. Right now, believe it or not, you cannot store inoperable vehicles in auto repair shop. Yeah. So, this is a cleanup item that would make sure that, obviously, something that that business needs to function, that they're doing legally. A tie into that somewhat is, right now, you don't have to park in a designated parking space. So, the example I was giving to the committee earlier is, if you wanted to come and take up four spaces and park horizontally, well, there's nothing in the ordinance that says that you can't do that. People probably don't, but this at least codifies the need or the ability for us to issue tickets for that. Abandoned vehicles is another point of clarification. The ordinance doesn't address those right now either. So, this would allow us to remove abandoned vehicles, which would be defined as those left for more than 48 hours, and public safety would track that. And that also tracks with the state of Michigan requirements. We would change the ban from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. And this is based on anecdotal reports from public safety. Oftentimes, those who are leaving early for shift work come out at 5:30, and they're ready to shift their cars around, and they pull one out, and maybe they might have a nosy neighbor who calls to report that they had parked in the street overnight, and it's 5:45, and they get a ticket. This is not the point of the parking prohibition, so we want to make sure we're accommodating those residents who might have early morning wake-ups and need to move cars accordingly. And then, lastly, it would allow for enforceable temporary parking restrictions for things like leaf pickup. So, right now, DPW puts those little signs, "Leave pickup on your street today, please don't park." That would become an enforceable offense. So, that would make it easier for DPW to get their leaf pickup done. It would make it easier for emergency infrastructure repairs, also for things like civic events, where we have no parking on certain blocks because of a particular event. We could alert residents via this new messaging system and then also enforce that.
So, just some other direction that we would need. Again, this is a first reading, so if you choose to move this forward, these are things that we could bring back for the second reading. Some of these things, though, too, come down to more of the policy that goes behind implementing what is in the ordinance. So, we don't have to have all this. It's all going to depend on, you know, what your comfort level is, based on where we're at today. You know, what are the terms of the eligibility of an annual parking pass? You know, is there, is there a way that we can, just right out of the gate, limit who can apply for an annual parking pass? So, one way is, any resident can apply for an annual pass. Or, do you put in some more strict rules or guidelines that say, well, you can only apply for it if you have no driveway apron, you can't park without blocking a sidewalk, you... I don't know all the list, but I think you get what I'm saying. Can we tie some stricter rules to those that get an annual parking pass? So, in some places, folks might live in front of a no-parking area. That is a gray area that we'd have to work around. But, for example, where you can legally park in front of your home, it has to be in front of your home, or within a certain distance of your home, or not on the opposite side of the street as your home, something like that. Could we look at that? Maybe. There may be limits to what we can charge for an annual pass. We've seen some comments on, well, 300 is not enough, it's too low, or what have you. We have some more research that we want to do around what that fee might be. Do you look at, you know, is there a potential cap on the number of these passes that might be available? So, for example, you know, Jordan was talking about, or I should say Lieutenant Copernick was talking about doing some counts. Anecdotally, officers, how many vehicles were on the streets tonight? You know, roughly, give or take, it was 150 across the entire city. You know, do you look at some sort of limit? Again, I'm just going to stress this. If we're going to do some sort of what I'm going to call a hardship test, it needs to be as objective as possible. I really don't want to put our officers out there in even more of a subjective type of situation where they're left to interpret things, and we interpret it in a way that makes somebody else unhappy, and now, you know, we're being dragged through the mud on social media because of A, B, or C. I want it, if we're going to do it, it should be as objective and easy to understand, not just for staff, but for the residents that might apply for that. And did we have anything else? You are closing up. So, with that, we'll talk a little bit more about, if this were to move forward, how would some of the rollout and some of the communication go?
Thank you. So, as we've mentioned, this would be the first reading of the ordinance, and so this would need to come back in front of you regardless for a second reading. And in between the first and the second reading of the ordinance would be a great opportunity for an educational campaign to our residents about what we're talking about and why. So, ultimately, we would not just be leaving people to figure out what has changed and why this has come to pass. Communication and education has already started. There was an article that was posted on the front page of our website, kind of going over all of these details and explaining why we're discussing this and that it would have been discussed tonight. So, there will also be an update about what was discussed tonight posted as well. In addition to these items on this slide here, our public safety department would put printouts with very basic rules about the permits and the QR code, or a convenient shortened link to be able to sign up for the temporary pass when they're issuing a ticket if needed. So, that would help educate people so that they know that there is this option available to them. There would be infographics with photos of the online permitting system and the pass, and a few bullet points outlining when it would be used. This will be used for all of our social media channels, our website, flyers posted around the community. Basically, I'm hoping people are going to be sick of hearing about this by the time we're done here. There would be some frequently asked questions also posted onto the website, and then this would be tied to a social media campaign highlighting the answers. We've done this before for things like our curbside leaf pickup program, and that has worked really well with getting information out to our community members. Of course, there would be information in our newsletters about the changes, and then there would also be specific outreach during events and other occasions where residents might have additional cars temporarily due to visitors, things like that. The information from the city would also be shared in Berkeley High School Communications to kind of cover that piece about maybe high school drivers who are now entering the scene into your home. And then, there would also be sandwich board signs that would move around the community. So, like I said, hopefully, people would be sick of this by this point. We have a lot of plans for how people would learn about this. And then, just up here on the screen is sort of a mock-up of what that printout could look like. It's not the final version, but just wanted to share that with everyone. And with that, I believe our slides are done. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
So, again, I'm going to open to council. If anyone has questions for staff or city manager before we jump in.
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you all for the work that went into this. The materials were very well organized and thoughtfully sequenced. There was one slide in particular that kind of highlighted some of the key items. I was wondering if we could bring that back up. My thought process is, there are some things that I imagine might be, yeah, this makes sense, we have general consensus on that, let's, you know, let's kind of do that one. And there's others that may be more contentious that we may want to dig deeper into. So, I'm kind of thinking, can we get some of the, yes, you know, not to say yeses because we're not voting yet, but things that we generally agree on out of the way, if you will? And I'll start by, you know, the, oh, maybe it's a different slide.
Okay, I was going to ask.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
That's okay.
They're all so awesome, right? The one about online applications.
Ah, okay. I see. Yes. Was it this slide, Councilmember?
Maybe a little earlier, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Leading us on a red hat here.
No, no worries.
There was something a little earlier where we had, like, here are the kinds of the main things. It was early in the deck, I think. But, you know, anyway, the bit about, like, the online registration, to me, that feels like something that demonstrates how far we've come as a society, and that Berkeley is, you know, obviously behind the times with carbon paper forms. You know, I'm wondering if, kind of like, working through these things one at a time might be a way to just kind of say, you know, kind of way to figure out where we all agree, or at least are leaning, because we're not voting yet, obviously, and then where there are things that we might need to dig in a little deeper. Yeah, all this kind of stuff. Oh, my gosh, there's all sorts of words there, isn't there? Well, I guess I'll just start with the, I will, I am in support of the online. I think that is a great idea. I loved your point about the data. You know, data going in is all we have. It seems to me like it would be incredibly helpful for enforcement to get the folks that are violating it and not falsely, or get the folks that, you know, were doing the right thing, and the pass just, like, fell underneath the dashboard or something like that. So, I'm in favor of that one, for sure. A lot of the other, like, easy cleanup kind of stuff, I think, makes a lot of sense, like, you know, for the parking spots that are striped, all right, you know, so you can't park across four of them. I mean, that's, I didn't even know that that was an option for me to consider doing that, but...
Please don't.
I better hurry while I can before second reading, huh? So, I mean, those kinds of things, I think, are real straightforward. And then, when we get into some of the other stuff, you know, like, I think the contention will be around, or discussion will be around the annual pass, you know, so I don't know if we can kind of get the easy stuff out of the way. That's what I'm, more of a process question for us here. What do you guys think?
I agree with that. I also want to add, you know, I think inoperable cars should be able to be parked at a repair shop, I mean. Unless you're parking it across four spaces, but I think that's obvious. And the technology, I think we have to make it easier, and we have it, or will have it. So, I think using that is...
Yeah, because people want to comply, right?
If I may, then, the proposed amendments codify the issuance of temporary parking permits, allow for the temporary storage of inoperable vehicles at auto repair shops, the need for vehicles to be parked in a designated parking space, define abandoned vehicles as those left for 48 hours, and allow enforceable temporary parking restrictions in areas with signage for things like leaf pickup, emergency infrastructure repairs, and special events. Those, what I'm hearing, those are the things that are potentially less contentious, and if we, yes, Councilmember Valani?
One, and maybe city manager Guinzler may, I don't know if this is overthinking it, but given some of the feedback we've heard from residents, we're codifying the need for, or the allowing for the temporary storage of inoperable vehicles at auto repair shops. What about, because I know this is a concern of residents, inoperable vehicles that attempt to get a pass on residential streets? Like, are we going to permit, not permit that? And some of them could be, hey, I'm in the middle of a car repair that takes 36 hours and need to do that, but I know there's a concern from residents that I don't want a car on blocks next to my house. So, do we need to add any kind of clarification into the codification to account for that?
You probably could, but where I would recommend that you handle that is with the actual policy on how these would be enforced, and you guys jump up if I'm missing anything here. So, for example, we might lay out in the policy that sets up the temporary rules, okay, or one of the temporary passes, that you can, you're eligible, well, the temporary passes are kind of open, let's use, well, the annual won't work. I would say, in the policy, we might just word something that an inoperable vehicle is not eligible for a temporary pass. So, in other words, I could put my good vehicle... So in other words, I could put my good vehicle out in the car while I have my vehicle up on the driveway
Correct.
doing the brakes, or whatever it happens to be, but not vice versa.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
I like it.
Okay. Councilmember Hennig?
Yeah. First, I want to thank the staff. I know they put a lot of work in this, and just want to acknowledge that, you know, there is going to be some uncertainty in this, and there probably will be some, you know, whatever direction we go, there will be refinements that'll need to be made. But, you know, with that in mind, I want to act conservatively, probably, and slowly, and if we need to expand, expand it slowly after overtime. Lieutenant Kobernick, if I may have a couple of questions. You know, you know, we've heard from a lot of people that they don't want any cars on the street. But the reality is, we have a lot of cars on the street right now, anyway.
Correct.
So we do nothing, we still have about, we estimate about 150 cars
Correct.
a night on the street. So, you know, and similarly, I hear, you know, they never write tickets. But do you know roughly how many tickets?
Last month, we were over 1,900.
Okay.
I'd have to check again to see exactly where we're at, but right around there, it sounds about right for, because about 3,000 a year, give or take.
Yeah. And then, you know, some people say, well, they never ticket this neighbor, but some of those repeat offenders?
I get, again, speaking very generally, I can tell you when the chief gets emails, and we get emails, we end up looking back and looking at the plate. Nine times out of 10, they have multiple tickets, 15, 10, 30, whatever it is. Whether that person gets up early in the morning and goes, removes a ticket, and the neighbor doesn't see it, or they're just not happy with that person, all could be possibilities.
So it's certain we're not getting 100% compliance?
Absolutely not.
But there is an effort going on. Do we think that the proposed changes will help improve? Will we get closer to 100% compliance, do you think? Will you be able to, you know?
So, again, it's uncertain. In my opinion, just kind of being here, and, you know, I think it comes down to convenience. And I think, and it's a known fact, that we're not going to, there's not that 13 hours of staff time to dedicate to write every car every night. I think that's just a foregone conclusion. There's priority runs, there's 400 or between now, or between, I'm sorry, January 1st and now, there's been roughly 370 runs, whatever it is, between the times of 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM. Add that into the mix, and, you know, those could be traffic stops that take five minutes, those could be OWRs, those could be all different things. To really get into the weeds on it would be difficult. But there's other stuff going on. So to answer your question, no, we're not going to get to everybody, but I think increasing, again, it's a convenience thing. If it's not a guaranteed thing, that I'm going to get a citation every night, do I let the car sit out there and I just stay on the couch? Or do I go move it? And I think that's at $10, I think people take that risk. I think 50 changes things a little bit, but again, I think, again, looking at the entire picture when we looked at this, what we didn't want is that person who does have five cars to now getting, because everybody else is now compliant, and that person stuck with five cars, the teenage drivers, who was getting, you know, maybe three tickets a month, four tickets a month, is now getting four tickets a month, or six tickets a month at $50. We wanted an outlet, and that was part of this package.
Okay. I think this might be a question for Director Kamplatsky. If, so we're, and maybe for our interim manager, so if we're estimating very roughly, if we do a hardship sort of check, that it's going to be about 20 minutes per, do we have an idea if there is no hardship check, there still be some time for each permit? Do we know how much time that might be?
So from an annual parking permit standpoint, the time that would be devoted to that would be for them to come in, it would be to community development. We would ask them to fill out a quick form, name, whatever. It would probably only be about five minutes of staff time, I would guess, including checking out at Treasury.
Okay. If we went a hardship route, is McKenna, you know, one of our consultants, able to possibly pick up that work?
So if we were to go through code enforcement as our person that's handling the hardship, that would be through McKenna, and as interim City Manager Guinerme said, that could reduce our code enforcement service availability. If we were to ask them to do this in addition, I think that we would need to look at the contract and really see if that's something that they could offer. Just on my recollection right now, I think it's written very specifically on the services that they provide, and we would have to add this in, and I don't know if they'd want to renegotiate or not.
Right. And just the avenue I'm exploring is, you know, we have a, they, new contract, they would want some fee for it, and that would be part of the fee for doing a permit. So, okay, I think that's all I have right now.
If I could just expand on that for a moment, Councilmember Hennig, because I'm just following your thought. So right now, the staff that we have from McKenna is our trade inspectors, so I wouldn't assume that they would be sent out to do this. And then we have a code enforcement officer. So if we were asking them to do an additional inspection, it would either have to be the code enforcement officer, or they'd have to provide another person to do that inspection.
And, I'm just spitballing here, they're probably not going to be that interested in, like, a fractional person, at a very small fractional.
You are following my train of thought, yes. I'm assuming not.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I appreciate the importance of this conversation and the quality that we're seeking to pursue this. I respect a lot of the folks have been here this evening thus far, and so I'd like to make the motion to suspend the rules of our council so that we can continue this conversation past 10 o'clock. If we were to not do so, then we'd need to adjourn without, you know, getting into this and the other items that are on our agenda this evening, so.
Thank you. Okay, can we, all in favor? Significantly saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So was there any more?
I just have a few questions. And I think we're, just if we allowed a hardship for, I'm just throwing a number, 100 cars. And then there's a snow emergency, how, where would they park during that hardship? Like, during the snow emergency? I'm thinking, like, where are these cars going to go if they can't, if we say they can't park in their lot, driveway, friend's driveway, neighbor? Where would they park if we were allowing it during, or leaf pickup? I mean, leaf pickup, they could move a block over, but if snow is kind of...
They would probably end up where they would traditionally end up today. They'd have to talk to their neighbors, or find a parking lot somewhere, maybe a private parking lot that they've got an arrangement with. That's an issue that we currently have today, is snow emergency, and they don't have room in the drives. You see them parked sideways across the easements. I don't think that problem's ever going to go away.
Right.
The difference is now we'll have a way to contact those people directly and let them know that there's a snow emergency or there's leaf pickup.
And they didn't move. So now, they would be towed, so we could plow, or would you plow around, you think?
Would most likely plow around them, but if the snow was large enough, they'd have to get them moved one way or another.
I'll just touch on that real quick, on the towing. Generally, with those snow emergencies, the tow trucks are pulling cars out of ditches. So generally, it's a citation. But again, there's, that's the communication piece that we, you know, kind of talked about, feel it's missing, too, is the ample notice. It just, this is a direct way with people we know that are in the street, that are going to get the direct notice. Do you guys want to see this?
Sure.
Yeah.
Councilmember Black?
Jordan, let's, help me out here, let's do fact versus fiction for a sec, right? So part of the emails we got addressed safety. Looking at some of our neighbors that don't have this ban, that have cars on the street, do you see, are you aware of increased, you know, B and E, breaking into vehicles? Because, you know, there's that perception out there that all of a sudden now, you know, Berkeley's going to become an appetizer for criminality, and our cars are going to get busted into, they're going to get stolen.
First off, I don't think this program is going to do that. That's first thing. I don't think that people are going to, you know, if the long-term process, and I think we're going to see actually reduction in cars in the street with the higher fine. But I can tell you, yes, from the beginning, I've said, in a perfect world, we'd have no cars in the street, we'd have perfect sightlines up and down, but again, that's not realistic. I can tell you, being on perimeters in Royal Oak and Ferndale, some different cities that have a lot of cars in the street, it changes things, it changes the dynamic of looking down the street and looking for people. So, and I think there is a higher incidence of cars getting broken to that are on the street versus, but we have them both ways as well. So I can't sit up here with stats and tell you that, but sure, I've been on situations where it's been beneficial. But I can tell you, too, any midnight I've worked in, you know, the 16 years here, there's always cars, you're going to have some kind of sightline, there's never, not any cars in any streets. And that's just the reality, that that's here, that that's what's here, so.
Thank you.
If you're that interested.
Thank you. And building on that, I mean, folks, if they were to get those temporary permits or an annual pass, they would understand that having their car out in the street would potentially expose them to that kind of thing. And so that would be part of their calculation in their heads as they think about applying for that, say, oh, if I leave my car out in the street, as opposed to, you know, if I can't make it work in my driveway, I understand that that's, you know, that's how it...
So again, in the grand, again, being here and looking at reports, and generally, if we get hit with something, it's one big push, it comes through and it's gone.
Right.
Again, if you take 150 cars a night and run that data back, it's a very small percentage of chance that your car might get broken into.
Right, right, yeah. And they do just kind of tend to make their way down a block or something like that. It's not just like, oh, I'm going to get that one right there.
Correct.
Yeah.
And the software does allow for disclaimer as well. So basically, city attorney or whatever, would obviously, we'd have to say in it, and obviously spell it, before you can actually move on to the next screen, there's an acknowledgement on there as well.
Yeah, thank you, that's helpful. If we were to explore the annual pass, is it annual, like in, you get a year from when you sign up for it, or would it be annual as in the calendar year? Because I think there's a different words, and I just want us to be clear.
Great question. So the reason, again, with efficiency, really kind of thinking of everything with this, and kind of some experience of driving around at 4:00 in the morning and getting out and looking for red passes, part of the reason why that pass is reflective is so that an officer can see it driving by. So that's going to change every year to a different color. So when officers drive by, they're going to see it, they move on. Again, it's just using our resources most efficiently.
Yeah.
In terms of...
We were looking at calendar year with, if this were to roll out, we'd have some sort of, you know, if it starts mid-year, maybe it's half the price the first year, or something like that. Again, as the lieutenant said, we're trying to make this as administratively efficient as possible, that can help us operate this program, but make it so that we have data that can be used to support enforceability.
Thank you, yeah. I do like the idea of the calendar year versus a rolling year, because that makes administration so much more straightforward to say, okay, hey, it's 2025 now, so you get the green ones, and then 2026, it's purple, or whatever it is. And then, you know, whether or not we choose to prorate it on a quarterly basis, or just say, hey, if you sign up in October, you know, paying the same as if you were to get it in January, I guess that's more of a policy thing. If, again, if we were to pursue an annual thing, I would certainly look to see the maximum that we could charge for that. I do think 300 feels, you know, a little on the easy side, but, you know, again, that's just my perspective, but I think, I think, you know, seeing what we could do to push that a little bit would be good. And I'm, I think maybe, some of the hardship test stuff, I'm thinking, some of the examples that you listed there did give me pause. Coming into this, I was not super in favor of a hardship test of any kind, it's just like, if you pay your $700 or something, then you get this thing, and you can, you know, you can only have one for your house, and at a high enough price point, it's going to make people not just want to, like, have it be a trivial. But some of the examples you mentioned, especially the ADA and handicapped and things like that, really gave me thought, it's like, oh, that's, that could be, that could be an interesting thing to kind of pursue. So I've gone from nah, not into the hardship, to maybe at least seeing what we could do that it would, again, be defensible, right? Because I don't want to set us up for discretion that gets us into lawsuits, like, wait, you give my neighbor one, but I can't get one, and, you know, my leg is more broken than his is, you know? So I think that would be interesting. And then the completely, sorry, I'm all over the place on this as well, just like, I appreciate the train of thought. You mentioned a couple of times about cars parked sideways on the easements. I see that all the time on Edwards and many other streets. Does this touch that in any way, or is that something we can consider in a future revision to this? Because I see that all over the, you know, I see that a lot, and it doesn't really count as on-street parking, because they're not on the street, but they're on the easement, blocking sidewalks and stuff.
So we see that a lot, and that's obviously somebody trying to fit within the rules because they don't have the space.
Correct.
So, I mean, they're trying to work within the space. That's obviously something to be addressed if it's a nice, or council like it. For us personally, it doesn't affect us in terms of the sidewalk being clear, the street being clear, so we generally don't address it.
Yeah. So to that thought, then, ideally, they're just trying to make ends meet, figuring out what they need to do to balance the number of cars they have, and the placement of their garage, and the driveway, and things like that. And the idea here is that if we make it easy, or if we make it possible for them to do the right thing, they would presumably do the right thing. Yeah.
We run into those a lot of corner houses, right? Looking at the risk versus reward, and what's more important is, somebody's trying to comply by not parking the street, but now they're blocking the sidewalk, so a 10-year-old and a bicycle has to go into the street to go around their vehicles.
Right.
They're in a bad situation. And we've gone out there, we've talked to them, and we recognize that they're in a tough situation.
Correct.
And people call them, we go out there and we address it, generally by just trying to talk to them, and they're stuck.
Yeah. And I'm certainly, you know, having seen those along those streets and stuff, I'm certainly sympathetic to those that are legitimately just trying to get stuff to work out. And so I like the idea of providing them with an avenue to, you know, like I said, to do the right thing. If we find that down the road, if additional mechanisms were in place, and they continued to park on the easement, just because, hey, why pay the 300, 500, whatever, when I can just continue to park here? Maybe that would be something that we could revisit in the future. You know, as my colleague mentioned, we'd want to kind of just get something off the ground and see how it goes and adjust over time, but I can kind of see that as a potential discussion point.
Yeah, the issue we're going to run into is we do, again, it's all kind of linked together. So if that person, we just use an example, has 15 passes per car, they have two cars, 30 days are out. So what do they do after 30 days? Now they're stuck in predicament where they're getting $50 tickets versus $10 tickets.
Mm-hmm.
And that comes back to the whole thing of giving people options, and that's really, kind of really targeting those people who are really stuck.
Right, right. Hence the idea of the pass, yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
I have a question, a follow-up question, I'll go. So I had a hard time hearing, did you say 70 cars usually a night, or seven?
150.
Oh, 150, I don't know where I got 70 versus seven.
I mumble.
Um, and it's these fans, but I'm not complaining about it, it feels great. So then, the next one, for the easement, is that allowed now, or no? That would be a ticket?
As far as I know, right now, there's nothing that I have seen that prevents somebody from parking horizontally on the easement.
Okay.
Grass, for sure.
Sure. But that would be a cemented, usually, or gravel, or cemented? I think all the easements are cemented. Is that something we could consider?
You're talking the drive apron.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I know where you're talking, right? Like, the cars, there's two cars, there's a single, or, oh, single-car garage. Somebody parks in the garage, the next person parks on the easement.
Yep.
Is that allowed or not?
There's nothing that would prevent that right now. There's nothing that would prevent that right now. If they're parking on the grass, that's an issue.
I've been over that thing a bunch, I, not to my knowledge.
Yeah, so I mean, that would give a lot of, single garage lots on the corner, another spot at least.
Yeah.
There would be two spots for that, that maybe.
Yeah, we could consider that.
And they're maybe afraid that they're gonna get a ticket, but they're, they're off the sidewalk, they're off the street, they're just on that easement.
Yeah, I like that train of thought, it's good.
Counselor McRae.
Just to build on that, I really want people off the sidewalk, because, you know, not just the kid with a bike, the person that's not as able-bodied, you know, the parent with a stroller, and, you know, it's not that they're there from 2:00 to 6:00 a.m., it's, you know, they often pull up for the night, but then people are still walking around, or it's Sunday morning and they haven't pulled out yet, but people are out and about. So, you know, I've corresponded with a gentleman that, you know, I twisted my ankle having to go around these houses, so, or these cars, so, one anecdote, but, you know, I really want them, and I think a lot of people want them off the sidewalks as well. Do we have any concern with them parking sideways in the apron if they fit and don't block anything?
I, I mean, as long as they're not hanging over the.
Yeah, I mean, it's the only option they may have.
Yeah, the streets, you know, it's like parking on the street, but back 10 feet or however wide a car is.
The only question I might have is, is it an issue with snow removal, and you plowing into them?
Oh, we always get plowed into.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend you park your car there during snow removal operations, because you're gonna get the full weight of the snow coming off that truck, and it, but I get it, there's places that you need to park, you don't have spots. Normal, everyday parking there, I don't see an issue. We do have some areas, like in Royal, where that's a really deep easement, you can fit a full car traditionally parked between the curb and the sidewalk.
Yeah.
As long as it's not a long car. But during a snow emergency, if that's your, if that's your last resort, just know you're gonna have some snow pile up the curb, so we're gonna move out and kinda go around it to try and avoid damage to the car.
Yeah, so it, it sounding like some direction might be to just make sure that that's allowed and an option for people.
Okay.
Counselor McRae.
Yeah, I, I won't say this is silly, but I think some of this calls for our residents to be neighborly and understand people's hardship. I mean, that's, when I moved here in 2008, that's one of the things I loved most about Berkeley was how neighborly people are. So it, it's heartbreaking to hear about people up looking for reasons to call, you know, Jordan and, and his fellow officers for people to get tickets, it's just that, that's, I know you can't legislate morality, but I think, you know, part of this is just understanding your neighbor's situation, you know, right? Like, the fact that we have some people who have, we got two-car families in a one-car garage, like, that's, that's, if that's not a hardship, I don't know what is. And, and, you know, I'll, I'll speak bluntly, I have four, we are a family of six, and we got four cars, and I have four teenagers, and if any one of them gets another car, then we're gonna be probably in a tough situation. But I would hope that our neighbors would understand that. So I think that part of this is just, I think we gotta go back to being neighborly, helping each other, understanding that a hardship is a hardship, and trying to do our best to make things work for everybody, because that's really what's gonna make our community better. Final thing is, the master plan calls for us to grow, so you can't grow and stay the same. So I think we have to look at things that call for us to grow, but also be smart and maintain the best of, of who we are, so, you know, that will determine how I, how I vote and view things moving forward.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council questions?
I'm opening up public comments. Come to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, please direct your comments to the chair.
Okey-dokey. Moesherikian, 3500 Block of Cumberland, you've heard my resume already. A few comments. The way that this was presented probably created a little bit more stir from, I know on my block it did, so, I think it should have been made clear that there was not going to be a retraction of the parking ban, per se. I don't know that that was, should have been probably the first sentence. I may not have been here tonight if that was the case. All right, 2 minutes, 28 seconds, ready? Take notes. What was the nature of the 2023 parking survey? I have heard that there was only 16, 17, 18% of the people that had an issue with this, and I'm hearing the number one-third. Was that an actual survey, or was that just a informal survey taken? Because based on what I'm hearing from my block, it's a lot more than, than 85% that are against this. How much is the software? Is it in the budget? How much are we paying for it? Will the cost of these passes cover the software and the use of it? Which, by the way, I have no problem with the software. You've answered the questions about the snow emergencies and the disrepair. I recently had a, a car towed in Royal Oak that was in front of one of my condominiums that had flat tires and, and broken glass, and it was sitting there for a month, they didn't have any problem removing that car. I'm not sure why our ordinance isn't clear about that. What about the impact on crime? I've been living in Berkeley for 34 years, I've also li, uh, lived in Dearborn Heights, there was five people and six cars in my family, and we had one single driveway and lived on, on an emergency lane, and we'd just move the cars at night so that we were in the order when we had to leave. Hey, Dad, when are you leaving? Hey, Mom, when are you leaving? We didn't have a problem with that. So, again, coming from a family that had six cars and five drivers, we just figured it out ourselves. We didn't wait for the government to figure it out for us. How do we treat homes on the corner? I have a home on the corner of Edwards and Columbia, it is a problem, my tenant has got a ticket, we have been talked to and told by certain officers, tell them to get it off of the sidewalk, and other officers that said we can just park, tell them to park horizontally. We put in our leases a notice that says that there is not overnight parking in Berkeley from 2:00 to 6:00, and it really doesn't affect us renting our houses, which has been rented 100% since 2011. So, and by the way, they, I, you need to get it straight as to whether or not tickets are getting passed out, because then I want my money back if tickets aren't getting passed out. So also, I, I guess I'm out of time, but I'd like this to be taken up with a little bit more seriousness in terms of, like, giving us some opportunity to have a little longer forum than this. Thank you.
Hi, Tom Stathopoulos, I live at Catalpa in Hamilton. I'm one of those people who didn't have room for my cars. With all due respect, $300 is a little low, I wish I had your money. But anyway, the tags, people work for General Motors, they work for a hospital, they have a mirror tag, you're gonna put that parking tag on top of them, so then they're gonna get the tags confused. I respect the officer's opinion that he likes to have a clear line of sight, maybe, maybe Berkeley should try canning the 2:00 to 6:00 a.m. parking ban, that would cost nothing, and see how it works out. I'm just saying. We tried Coolidge, it's a great idea, we kept it. I don't know how many of you all walked to this meeting tonight, I did, I don't know how many of you tried, tried crossing Coolidge, but it's more difficult. Anyway, we don't have any data how many tickets were actually issued this year, there's no data how many tickets were issued, but the $300 for a annual pass, I mean, a clunker costs $500 a year to, to register, and jacking the price of a parking ticket up $50, I think that's kinda steep, I think, I think things happen. When I was in a mine, I had no room, I had three cars with two spots, I paid for storage for one of them, I parked in the apron, and I always made a point to leave the sidewalk clear, as clear as possible. I mean, even a handicapped person could, could go by it. So I think, I, I think parking in the apron is not an issue. I think parking in the sidewalk is an issue, but that's an issue, people park in the driveway and they have the rear end of the car hanging on the sidewalk, they have too many cars in the driveway, they should park in the street. So, I mean, I, I don't know, I think some of these measures, I like the 2:00 to 5:00 change, if we go to 2:00 to 5:00, because people do get up early. The abandoned car 48 hours, if somebody's car dies, it could be more than 48, but there's gotta be, I mean, I don't have a hard rule, but there's gotta be some subjective sense check. I mean, the gentleman mentioned the car with the flat tires and the broken roof, so that needs to be towed. I had a car in front of my house, in my house, I live in Hamilton and Catalpa, so I'm in the corner, so all the parking overflow winds up in front of my house. So I've got the clunkers of Berkeley, because it's convenient, they're dripping oil, there's nothing I can do. I've actually gone out there and scraped oil for some of these cars. You know, it is what it is, I mean, you know, there's nothing I can do about it. But, I don't know, a lot of this sounds like, it's, unfortunately, I think it's well-intended, but when you say $50 a ticket, $300 a pass, I just see dollar signs, and I think this is, it comes across to me, as somebody who's not too involved, as basically a scheme to generate revenue under the guise of improving our parking. I, I like going to City Hall for the pass, it drives home the point that you can't park on the street overnight, and I'm sure we could have a more, a smarter way of doing it, if the officers really has that much of a ti, hard time going through filing them an order by address or something, so, anyway, thank you.
Come on up.
Student plan on speaking, Steve Long, 38-year resident of Berkeley. One of my reasons for being in Berkeley this long has been the kind of country feel of the open roads at night. And I understand that people have hardships, and we might need to do something about that. When I, when I looked at the, the website, and this really is just a, a statement, they talked about, if you didn't like the overnight parking, too bad, you can move out. Well, I like the ban on overnight parking, and so what's that mean? I'm gonna need to move out of here when the streets get crowded? Just kind of a statement. And also about making Berkeley welcome, welcoming for other residents, or new residents, well, that's making me feel unwelcome now. I'm used to going out in the night and enjoying the wide-open street. I do like the idea of the temporary permits via online, it makes sense, it should have been that way a long time ago, should make it easier for these folks to police. If we do end up having to have permits, I think $300 is a joke, it should be $1,000 or more. If, you know, if people are paying $200 a month for cell phones, they can afford a little bit of money to inconvenience other residents parking cars. Little bit concerned about how you define a duplex or an apartment, there's houses on my street, some of them have three, it's a single house with three mailboxes. Is that considered an apartment, a triplex? There's houses with two mailbox, is that a duplex? It looks like a sing, a single house. That really concerns me. Is it a duplex? Is it an apartment? Is it multifamily? They talked about extra funds being used to fund municipal parking, the, the funds from the passes. I think that, that money should go to public safety for enforcement, hire an extra officer at night for that. I guess that's all I had. Sorry I wasn't so eloquent, but, you know, let's try to keep Berkeley our nice, family, homey community, and, sorry, I can't really give you suggestions, but, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long.
I am Nancy Lowers, I live on Kenmore. I think I do like the idea that there's a rationale for getting the overnight pass, if we go to that, not just not wanting to shuffle cars, so I would like to see that. The other thing I'd like to see is consideration for ones, roads with one-sided parking. So Kenmore has been repaved recently and has been narrowed, so now we have one-sided parking, so I am on the street, the side where people are parking, are able to park, so my neighbors are parking in front of my house now. And I have one neighbor in particular that's been parking in front of my house almost 24 hours a day for, since the end of April, so they get a parking pass, and then they, that expires, I, maybe 30 days, I don't know how long it is, and then they get another parking pass for their other car, and then they just switch cars. So now they, they've been, since the end of April, they've been parked in front of my house. So, you know, I would like to see that kinda thing kind of monitored, so, and I like the idea that the streets are more clear, so that when the officers are doing patrol, they can, I guess, I feel like they can spot trouble easier, if there's less cars on the road, overnight especially. So, those are my thoughts, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I sent you guys a, a letter about my thoughts on parking, so I don't wanna cover that up, but yeah, the 300 bucks is way too low. You know, a dollar a day for safe parking in front of your house or somebody else's? What a deal. Anyway, the online registration thing, that's a wonderful idea, even though I used to like sending my girls up to the police station to get a little taste of authority. If I was to get a permit, like, say, the $300 permit, it's issued to my house, is there any restriction where I can park? So can I pay the 300 bucks and park in front of my neighbor's house? That's, that's something that really needs to be cleaned up. As for parking on the street, I live on a boulevard street, it's narrow. Back when I had a job and, and was actually working and paying into social security, I left at 4:30 a lot of mornings, and if there was somebody parked in front of my house, I wasn't gonna get my truck out of the driveway. So there's a lot of good reasons to have no overnight parking on the street, there's very few hardships in the city. And Berkeley's a great place, it's just, starting this is one step in the wrong direction. And it's, you put the cat out of the bag, and, or, yeah, the cat gets out of the bag, you'll never get it back in. That's it, thank you.
Hello again, everybody, I'm Paul Jordan, I still live in Berkeley. I wanted to say that I do like the idea of being able to obtain the permit online, those permits should be required to be displayed, just like the ones we get from public safety. I was actually surprised to see in the memo that there was a proposal for 15 permits per license plate, and that kinda struck me that it didn't make a whole lot of sense, but then I realized that you do have to set a limit, otherwise people are just gonna keep on reapplying, reapplying. So I would like to see that be 15 per house, or even 10 per house, but we gotta compromise, right? That's the art of politics. I also found it interesting that the memo states that public, or that code does not contain any provisions for allowing public safety to issue temporary parking permits. Folks, I've been driving Berkeley for 40-plus years and parking here quite frequently, and I always had to go and get a permit from public safety, or from the police department prior. So I'm kinda wondering how that came about, if we didn't have an actual code for it, but that's another thing. As far as the annual pass, I think that allowing people who have a demonstrable hardship may have to be inadequate compromise. The city needs to set standards, you guys need to set a guideline about what is a hardship. Short driveway, corner lot, yeah, absolutely, especially for people who have three and four cars in their parking, or, yeah, in their driveway. I've got a 40-foot driveway that goes to the back of my house, but I just don't want to have to get up in the morning and move cars. No, that's not a justifiable reason, and I don't favor giving permits just a blanket approval for anybody that's coming up with 300 bucks, or 1,000, or 500, or whatever it is. Regarding the vehicles that block the sidewalk, I kinda think that's a separate subject. Well, I know it's illegal, I doubt that very many people are calling about cars blocking the sidewalk at 2:00 in the morning, but I might be wrong. I also do approve of the 2:00 to 5:00, that's good. And just as an aside, a lot of people that are complaining about the parking not being enforced, the 2:00 to 5:00, 2:00 to 6:00, don't realize that public safety does have to prioritize things, and I appreciate that you guys do, because more than once you've been to my house to help mom. Sorry, get a little choked up there. So people need to realize that. It's not that they're ignoring it, it's just that they've had other things. I'd rather have them out there nailing a drunk driver, but.
Hi, Lisa Kemptner, Berkeley, Lisa Kemptner, the person, not Lisa Kempter, the planning commission, planning commission hasn't seen this, so I don't know what they think about it, and I can't speak for them. But I did serve on the master plan steering committee, and the one thing that really surprised me is, super organically, people love the overnight parking ban. That's what they called it. Loved it, like, what did you like about Berkeley? That's what they answered. What our consultants came away saying is that it was overwhelmingly supported in the city. And, and I think that's super important, the master plan is when the city looks at residents and says, help us decide which way this is gonna go. And when they speak, the city should listen. We just had a parking session for the zoning rewrite ordinance, this wasn't mentioned, it was all about parking, but this was never discussed. So if I was a person going there, what I saw. discussed. So, if I was a person going there, what I saw was that the parking study said, "Keep the overnight ban, enforce it, make it easier to get an online permit." That all made sense. Heck, even I, on the zoning rewrite committee, walked away thinking, "We're not messing with our overnight ban." If it's not based on a hardship and it's open for whoever you want, it is taking away the ban. It's just changing it to paid overnight parking. I mean, you are taking away the ban at that point. There probably are some cases where a hardship is needed. And yes, please, like, very clear standards for that. And that makes sense. But like, "I don't want to clean out my garage" isn't really a hardship. Or, "I want to have like a couch and drink beer and play pool and shoot darts in my garage" isn't really a hardship either, right? So, look at those carefully, but please, 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 don't ignore. I mean, your residents really clearly have said in multiple ways, "We love our parking ban." And just to address something, once upon a time in 2018, there were chats with Matt. And one of them had the chief there too, so it was chats with Matts. And, and I asked him, because people always say like, "Why are you doing this?" He was very clear. "It's safer to not have cars on the street." That was in 2018. I don't know that it's changed. Maybe it has. But yeah, okay. 30 seconds left.
Hey there. I'm Kevin Kenworthy. I live on Gardner. I actually just was here to earn a merit badge with my son back there.
For you to earn that badge.
I picked the wrong guy to come for this.
(laughing).
So, I figured I'd throw in my two cents. So, I'm one of the people that wakes up at 4:00 in the morning. So, I'm pretty much at the end of my rope right now. So, what, what I have to say is that at 4:00 in the morning, I have to get out and go to work. And of course, I can't park something on the street. So, what I try to do is leave my car on the street until my wife has gotten in there and then I'll park in there. But every once in a while, it doesn't get in there, you know? I fell asleep or whatever it may be. And every time that I go out to my car the next day and there's not a ticket there, I'm very excited, like, super excited. So, I guess the, the point is that I've never parked on the street intentionally illegally. But I have parked on the street overnight accidentally. And if the ticket's $50 and if I can pay $300, that's only, what, six tickets? So, I would probably jump on that. I guess my point, well, an extension to that is that, I'm in IT, so sometimes I look at the opposite side of things. Everybody likes the website. They like to fill out the forms. But what if we consider just giving you 15 warnings and then you start getting tickets? So, you don't need an online thing. You don't need anything. They just pull up, one less, 15, 14, 13. Yep, I think that's all my ideas. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, public comments, going once, going twice. Ms. Patterson, do you have something you'd like to add?
I do have two public comments sent in via email. One from William Moyer, Berkeley. He listed out his concerns regarding the ordinance. He said that the 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM no parking should stay in effect with only special permits approved as needed. I also have an email from Joel Olford of Berkeley. He asked that restrictions for apartments and rentals be added to the proposed ordinance.
Thank you. I'm closing public comments. Now, any further discussion? Yes, Councilmember Baker.
Thank you. Part of what I enjoy and find to be of value in these conversations is the ability for us to learn and grow and things. I mentioned earlier, I came into this not really appreciating the importance of the hardship thing. And so, I'm, you know, especially given some comments on either side of the examples have helped me kind of really want to see a thoughtful hardship definition come to be. So, I just wanted to let, you know, I, it's neat how you can learn, listen, pay attention, and value the input of, of my fellow neighbors. And, you know, given everything else we've talked about, I think, I think in addition to considerably evaluating, that doesn't make sense, evaluating the, the cost of the permit with the option to take it considerably higher, that's where I was trying to throw that word in there, some kind of hardship thing, I think, I think is really going to help make and break. Because I love that point about like, "Yeah, I just didn't feel like it. I do the math and it's only, it's only, you know, five tickets or whatever. I'm just gonna, just gonna pay it." I don't, I don't believe that to be a worthy hardship, so I'd like to see what we can do as we come into second reading.
Thank you. Councilmember Patterson?
Yeah, I, so I like most of that. Is there a way that we can move ahead with the IT stuff, cleaning up the scene, the reasoning, right? It would track the reason they're asking for it. Is it, you know, they slept on a couch or, or not? And then in the meantime, have a work group or a public session? To Lisa, the person's point, we had had that recently in our open house, right, with our zoning rewrite. It would give our public, I, I know we published this and we've talked about, we've had our own work group, but to have, now that it's more publicly, before we go ahead with the overnight ban restrictions or permits or hardships or anything going on from 2:00 to 5:00 AM.
I mean, I can, I can address that. Not going to love what I have to say, but part of why we elect elected officials is to consider all of the data and all of the discussions and all of the circumstances to play and to consider that and to therefore take all of that data and put that into policy. Again, this is just me. I don't know this community great. I know the, some of the questions that came up. I know what the conversation's been on Facebook. I don't really, it's not really something I spend a lot of time in. I don't see that turning into a productive use of time. And I'm just being honest, based on the conversation that I've seen play out thus far. In multiple places, we said we are not talking about lifting the ban. We're looking at how do we compromise and try to address some of these circumstances that do arise and put a ordinance into place that is enforceable because our officers cannot go out there and do what we talked about tonight. Number, a number of the emails that we received on this aren't really looking for the level of conversation that we had this evening. Again, I'm just being honest with what I saw. And I know folks may not necessarily like that assessment, but that is what I saw. That's why you all are here. That's why staff is all here, to look at all of this, to bring you thought-out, informed recommendations based not just on public feedback, but also our ability to do the work that we're required to do or have been asked to do. And we're telling you all that what we have is not working. It needs to be updated. You all have been elected by the community. Part of that responsibility is, okay, here's what we're hearing. Here's what we're hearing from the public, whether, wherever it stands. Okay, how do we now formulate an informed policy with all of that into consideration? What I'm, how I would summarize what we've heard and reading through some of the, the tone and other things that came into some of the emails that we saw, I'm hearing, in large part, this makes sense, but what are the guardrails going to be? So, if I was to give you a roadmap on how to move forward, I'm hearing fairly broad consensus on most of what's in here. The two outstanding questions, again, based on what I'm hearing, and we would love to go higher than 300 if we can. There may be legal reasons we can or cannot do that. We have to look into that, as we alluded to earlier. And then a hardship. What does that look like? I'm with Councilmember Baker. When we first got into this, I would rather have, you know, not created a big staff process. But as we have moved forward towards this meeting, as we've been through this meeting, as I've talked with individual council members, are there some practical, pragmatic ways that we could, right out of the gate, for lack of a better word, disqualify a, a number of residents because we know they're not going to meet the minimum threshold of a hardship? So then what does that leave us? Now, we're not going to be able to get all of the data to say, "Well, if we do all of that, it's going to leave 200 households eligible." We're not going to be able to get to that level of detail. But we're going to be able to say a vast majority of the, of the community is not going to be eligible for this because, as you saw in one of the earlier slides, only 18% or so have more than three vehicles in the house. We know that there is only a limited number of corner lots in the city. We know there are only a number of single, or excuse me, single-car garages versus two-car garages. Some of those things we'll be able to get into. Do I think all of this is going to be done at the next meeting in July? Not necessarily. I'd like to see what staff comes up with as far as a definition. But to drag this out and to keep putting it through more and more processes for the sake of processes, I don't think that's going to ultimately lend you with a better outcome. I would have us work with you all, get this as defined as, as best we can. We put this in place. Most of that's going to be addressed through a policy, right, versus an ordinance. That policy, we can come back and say, "Look, we like where this is at. We want to report back from staff in a year. How many passes did we have? How many tickets did we issue? What other hardships came up that we didn't accommodate for or didn't consider?" I'm sure there's all kinds of other data that could potentially be looked at, but that would be my recommended path forward. And again, you guys can disagree with that. If you want to give us, send us down a different path. I just know with all of the matters that we're trying to work on, you're in the process of trying to hire a new city manager. We've got a lot of things to do. I think for that, public engagement, I think around the budget and other, some of these other concerns are going to be a better use of everybody's time than zeroing in on parking.
Thank you. Any other discuss, Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, I think, I think there's a two-phase approach we can take tonight. There's the ordinance, making sure we like the ordinance and perhaps approving the first reading, and then giving direction on the policy component. Because the ordinance will take a second reading and then 30 days and, but we can start giving some direction. We can, I think there's a few items that like need to discuss on the policy part that we can go down one by one and sort of get a sense of where council is feeling. And then that gives some direction. And I don't know if this is possible, since it's an extended time between our next meeting, if the proposed policy document can be ready earlier for the community to give input before we come back to our July meeting. So, that fulfills a bit of the community input part. But we're, you know, we're putting a stake in the ground to start a conversation.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I, that kind of layout makes sense to me. I'd also just like to throw one more policy item on sort of the, the discussion and not necessarily take the temperature of council of where folks are at tonight, but just kind of in thinking about it, putting some sort of limitation on the number of annual passes permitted each year. So, I don't know if that's, I, I say that if for no other reason, you know, I haven't necessarily heard it come up yet. And I just want to make sure that that's part of this policy discussion that Councilmember Henan's talking about.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, I think I love, I like where this is going as well. My only concern with putting an artificial cap on it is then that, that puts the emphasis on the communications to make sure that the, the people, if there is a hardship thing, that the, the hardest of hardships make the cut and like the, you know, that kind of thing. I'm just, I would, it would be unfortunate if someone were to move into the city and have a situation where this was really critical. But it's like, "Oh, sorry, we just sold the last one for the year. You're going to have to just tough it out." You know, it's always that, that kind of situation. So, I'm in favor of more of like setting a, a baseline, kind of understanding the temperature of the community to see what the appetite is based on whatever fee we're able to establish and whatever hardships we define. And then have that as a baseline and say, "All right, now is that, does that seem reasonable? Does it feel like it's been abused and we need to tighten it? Does it feel like we've left people out and we need to loosen it?" That's part of having a, the first year to get a feel for how it works for our city.
Sure.
You know, and so that's just, that was my only, you know, initial thought. I'm not opposed to a cap. It's just, it feels arbitrary.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to figure, and please try to follow my 1045 logic because it's a little, a little muddled. But, I mean, at this point, correct me if I'm wrong, literally any car could get a permit every night to be parked on the street throughout the course of the entire year.
15 times.
No, 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 not, that's, yeah, currently, right now, right?
Currently, yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, right, yeah.
But theoretically, there, there is nothing that prohibits them from doing that.
Okay. So, I guess what I'm saying is, is that we're, in theory, we're fixing part of that problem with a 15 pass, you know, kind of limitation. But we'd also then be opening up the exact same concern on the back end because theoretically, if there's no cap on an, on an annual pass, then you are basically saying that any, again, any car could get an annual pass, or every car in the city could get an annual pass to park on the street, right? So, we're, we're opening up, we're fixing one and then opening up another one. Right, right. I'm sorry, one per household, five. But still, that's 7,200 cars.
I think an annual, I think a cap on an annual pass would make more sense after you at the very least have a baseline. So, I think that first year, I think you have to establish.
But we have a general baseline at this point. We have at least a ballpark. I mean, I don't think what I'm talking about is going to actually happen. I mean, that's not realistic, right? Just, just taking it sort, sort of the nth degree.
Yeah, but I think we got to be able to say, "Okay, what is a hardship?" Like, what is, and, and what are the varying degrees of hardship? And then what are the varying degrees of hardship that require an, an annual pass? Then after that, I think we have, we can take that data and say, "Hey, you know what? I don't know, just ballpark, maybe we have 70."
Sure.
So, you know, we say, "Okay, well, then the limit will be 100." I mean, I don't know. It, I think if we lean toward being welcoming and along with being smart, I think this will work itself out. My fear is, is that, is leaning away from being welcoming. And people moving here with four kids and it's like, "Oh, good luck. You all are going to enjoy Berkeley Tetris in 16 years." Like, I don't, like, it's just this idea that this is some rite of passage that because, "Oh, you know, we moved six cars around and we made it." No, it's not. Like, that's silly. It's like, it's silly. It's not, "Welcome to Berkeley. You're going to love the Tetris." No, that's not our, that's not a motto. So, again, let's, let's lean toward being welcoming where we can and then helping our residents. And again, if we're, if we're being neighborly and being welcoming, man, and there's a win-win solution for everyone. But again, as it, as it pertains to the approving of a first reading, I think, I think we're there. I think we can, I think we've, we've ground the sand at 1045.
Councilmember Henan?
I'm looking at a cap. I wasn't looking at this initially. I, I wanted a cap just to make sure we keep things under control. Things don't go, you know, we don't have too many. I'm now also looking at it from the perspective of staff time. Considerate of, you know, if we make it too high and it has actually matched that, how much time of staffs will that take? And so, to start with, I am considering a pretty low cap so we get a sense of how much of that, and this is, this is assuming there's a hardship, that there's a hardship.
Yeah.
So, I have, you know, different calculus if we, you know, if it's hardship or if it's just open to everyone. There's, I have different thoughts depending on which way. But I am really in favor of a hardship, trying to find the minimum that, the minimum work that's required to get there and a cap to make sure that we haven't opened it up so much that now they're bombarded with that work. And then we figure out over time what that right number should be. This perhaps also even has the benefit, it's kind of phased in larger. If there are people with a real hardship, they're not doing it all in one year. It's spread out over time rather than just a big deluge of applications all at Has the downside, people that don't make the cut. What are they going to do? But that problem sort of exists now as well, so.
I'm sorry, Nate.
I'll be a council member for a minute if you want, but I don't, then tell me who's going to trade with me. I'm, I'm hearing all this conversation and I'm, again, just being completely honest, I think a lot of this is going to work out as we go. I think a lot of this is going to work out as we go through the policy discussion. Again, just based on some of what I'm hearing, uh, some of what we heard comment-wise today, I think is if, if the, uh, consensus is some sort of hardship definition, based on how that's going to be defined, it's going to cap itself. And so I would caution any sort of arbitrary, let's throw out a cap right now. I would say let's focus the conversation on the hardship piece because that's going to be what's going to tighten, tighten that up.
Thank you.
Just with, um, in the work session and then tonight's staff time, like, like if we could for the next, just see which department's going for clear, for certain and what other duties would they be giving up?
Yeah, I, what I'm imagining is, um, if this gets moved forward for second reading, uh, I don't know how you do it here, but if this goes for second reading, we've got the ordinance piece, we'll have any additional red lines made to that as it comes back. Um, and then what I would imagine is, uh, kind of a, a presentation slash update as far as how would this be implemented? Um, what are some of the, the hardship pieces? Um, I don't think we would have any sort of form or anything like that necessarily ready, but at least the frameworks of a policy outline, um, both from a temporary pass standpoint because I heard a few things that probably should be tweaked there. But moreover, the, um, uh, annual pass, what would that look like? We heard, uh, the comments about parking on one side of the street. I don't know what the answer is to that. I, we've got some smart people, let's figure out what that is. And so some of these conditions that we heard about and can anticipate, we'll try to, uh, lay those out and bring those back to you and, uh, work through it in a conversation similar to this.
Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, now, so far as the ordinance, um, uh, I have one, uh, change that I would like to see on it. It's, um, uh, section 12294. The, uh, having, I think it's section B, I don't have that up right in front of me, um, that the procedures and fees are set by resolution of council. It's not, um, delegated to the city manager so that we.
Thank you.
Uh, we have that, uh, continue, that extra safeguard.
Yeah, you would just do it as part of your annual fee schedule.
That's right.
Yeah, but also, but also setting the procedures as well, so.
Yep.
Okay, and just as a point of clarification, we have a motion on the table and with support. Are we voting on the entire ordinance? Are we pulling some stuff off? I'm.
Right now, you're voting on a first read of the ordinance. That does not, let me just be very clear, that does not prohibit you from pulling pieces out during the second reading. So if we get to the second reading, this does not say you have to approve it. It does not say, look, you know what, we're good with everything, we're not ready on this annual pass thing, let's take that out, but we're going to keep the temporary thing in. So you still have a lot of flexibility, this is just saying the conversation is to be continued.
Thank you. So to clarify, just for everyone listening at home, when this gets regurgitated tomorrow, if we vote yes tonight, that does not mean we are approving annual passes. It means that we are continuing the conversation and that we still have this second reading that will have changes to it.
That is correct. And for those that are listening at home, they've heard that we are bringing back, um, information and further discussion on this hardship piece. It's been very clearly stated over and over and over.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, and just to make, we are approving the first reading that includes a process for us to set a resolution in the future that sets parking policy and fees. So there are more steps.
Okay. Ms. Patterson, please call the roll on O 0724.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. O 0724 has passed. Ms. Patterson, please read item number seven on tonight's agenda.
Item seven, motion number M 6124, matter of approving the appointments to various boards and commissions.
Is there a motion to approve M 6124?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Henan. Mr. Guyser?
This is my first year with this process. I don't know a ton about it. I know every community does a little bit differently. Um, we have put together a package of, uh, appointments that were, um, vetted through our process that includes the existing boards and commissions, council members, um, uh, whom am I forgetting? And staff, um, in this review. So with that, we're happy to take any questions. Uh, again, uh, largely, these are, these are your appointments. All the, uh, information and data that you've received are for consideration, but ultimately it is, um, the mayor and council's call on how you move forward, who you appoint, who you don't appoint, uh, things of that sort.
Thank you. Any public input on this agenda item? Discussion from council. Councilmember Baker?
This is incredible part of our, uh, opportunity here as a council is to provide a, a way for folks to apply their talents to help move our city, uh, forward in the ways that they can contribute, uh, um, their best efforts. We're thrilled with the slate of folks that are before us here across many different, uh, many different committees. And to your point, our process is such that the applications are received, they're vetted by both, you know, by the chairs of the committees and the liaisons and council at large and staff, uh, to, and we've had opportunities to interact with and talk with the applicants, whether they're returning or whether they're, um, they are new and say, hey, I'm, I want to help be a part of that, I want to make this awesome. Uh, I love that. I want to thank everybody that's been on, that's on this list to, uh, for their, for their time, for their, uh, desire to help the city. This is volunteer appreciation and your, you guys help make the city work. Uh, so I'm very grateful for that. Uh, and I'm pleased that, um, that we have such incredible talent, uh, within our city to, uh, to help make all these, these cool initiatives underway. So I love this, this is awesome.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Patterson, please call the roll on M 6124.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
No.
Dean?
Yes. Uh, the motion has passed. We are now at our communications portion. Ms. Patterson, who goes first?
Councilmember Black.
Madam Mayor, I do not have anything significant this evening, other than I will be speaking. I was invited to the June, the Hazel Park Juneteenth celebration on Wednesday, so I will have the opportunity to speak there and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Henan?
Yes, um, the zoning board of appeals, they denied a generator and a side yard. They approved a driveway larger than normal. The approval was in part based on an original permit in 2021, which allowed an improper driveway configuration, so no fault of the applicant. So we've since that time put several safeguards in place to prevent that in the future. Uh, they will be hearing five cases in July, two murals, uh, to make sure they don't contain commercial messages and three requests for dimensional variances. The tree board is on a summer hiatus, but you can sign up now for the Fall Street Tree Program Planning, Planting, and it's open through August 1st. Uh, you can go to BerkeleyMish.org/trees or call DPW at 248-658-3490. Uh, I want to thank on the tree board our outgoing members, Holly Tullendale, Mike Lenaway, our chairperson Kathleen, Kathleen Carlos, and especially Margaret Grassa, who's served for 32 years on the board.
Wow, yeah.
And then, uh, finally, uh, I'll be having some upcoming office hours. My next talk with Dennis will be Monday, July 15th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the library. You can stop by anytime with any questions or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Hey, that's me, thanks. Uh, historical hasn't met since our last meeting, uh, and, uh, they did want to thank everybody that stopped by the booth that they had, uh, at the Art Bash. It was great to see folks and, uh, help talk about our city's history and, and pave the way for the future, so that was fantastic. They'll also have a table, uh, at the Berkeley Pride event coming up, so that's going to be super cool. Likewise, I too want to thank our volunteers, we have amazing folks, most of the slate that was just passed are, are returning, uh, folks that are continuing their commitment and we've added a new member, uh, to historical committee, we're very thankful for that. Their next meeting is July 9th, and if you want to learn more about Berkeley history, you can go to BerkeleyHistory.com. It's cool. Uh, downtown development authority, DDA, met last week's Wednesday, June 12th. Uh, they approved the contract for holiday lights for the 2425 season, so that's along 12 Mile and along Coolidge, uh, to continue the festivities and bring about, um, you know, a little bit of holiday cheer. Uh, the, uh, the Berkeley outdoor social scene, the BOSS, uh, is off to a good start. Uh, that's a social district where folks are able to purchase, um, beverages of an adult nature, uh, at certain establishments and then walk, you know, take them outside and walk around within the designated space. Uh, it's, uh, new to Berkeley, but it's been a well-established, uh, technique in the past to, to continue to develop economic, uh, value throughout our downtown. And we have a few more, uh, of our establishments that are in the process of, um, going through approvals at the state level so that they can participate as well. Uh, the farmer's market is off to a great start, every Thursday, nine to three on the south side of Urbina and 12 Mile. And for more information about our downtown, please visit DowntownBerkeley.com. Uh, and finally, uh, it was Stephen Wright who once said, "If you saw a heat wave, would you wave back?" Now, I, I, obviously, I love that joke, uh, and, um, we may have noticed that we find ourselves in the middle of a heat wave right now. It is incredibly warm out there, uh, in, in brief, um, uh, brief increments, uh, we can obviously tolerate the heat to some extent, but please be careful, please take care of yourselves, stay inside, stay hydrated, do not leave animals or children in vehicles, uh, for pretty much any time that a vehicle's not operating to keep them cool. It's important to take care of yourselves and be safe. Uh, heat is incredibly powerful, uh, just like the bitter temperatures, the extremes come at both ends. Uh, and, uh, and with that, please, um, hug somebody you love. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, very quickly, uh, library board, the next meeting will be June 26th at 7:00 PM at the library, uh, and then the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee will meet August 8th at 7:00 PM at the community center, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Valani?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So for the Berkeley area chamber, the Berkeley Street Art Fest, which is the one on Coolidge, uh, will be held on July 13th, and they are still seeking sponsors, so you can head to their website to apply. Uh, on June 11th was the ribbon cutting for Emory Resale, which features resale designer wedding gowns and evening wear, so welcome to the neighborhood. For the environmental advisory committee, next meeting is this Thursday at 6:30 on the second floor of the public safety building. Big thank you to all of the EAC volunteers that made the bike corral possible at the Art Bash. We've heard lots of positive feedback on this and a very warm welcome to our new AAC members, very excited to meet you and work with you. Uh, additionally, one of my favorite events is coming up this Sunday, uh, at the Pride Festival, please come say hi, I'll be at the merch tent for the second half of the event. Uh, and then lastly, today has been a big day of voter activism and community engagement. And while it can be overwhelming at times when we receive an influx of communication on a specific topic, I always appreciate that residents have taken the time to voice their opinions. While I may not respond to each and every correspondence due to time constraints, I do read them all. I'd like to take a moment to address a specific theme that came up in several emails today that were clearly copied and pasted. To quote the email, "Please stop rushing into these decisions and please put your personal agendas aside. I did my due diligence and have driven past your homes. I know Ms. Valani lives on a corner and is most likely the reason this is being pushed. Your position should not be leveraged to push your own personal agendas. You are elected by the residents and you are supposed to be representing us as a whole. The parking survey you sent, from what I understand, approximately 80% of the respondents wanted to keep the ban in place, with approximately 16% wanting to change it. Please explain to me how the majority of 80% was ignored. Perception is important, and right now, the perception is that you are rushing into approving this just as you rushed the budget. It is not a good look with the election season upon us." End quote. Yes, we are your elected representation. We're also your neighbors. Most of us hold down full-time jobs, have family obligations, as well as other community-based roles. We are not your enemy, despite what social media might have you believe. We are here because we care about this community. Due diligence is not copying and pasting an email from someone in a forum. Due diligence is not driving by someone's home. Due diligence is reaching out and having a conversation with someone to learn more and determine if this perceived bias is real, which in this case, it is not. Yes, I live on a corner lot without a driveway. I also have a two-car garage, which holds two vehicles, bicycles for the family, our lawn equipment and other random items. As we only have two licensed drivers in my home, these proposed changes have zero impact on my personal situation. Due diligence would also uncover that I was not supportive of the ordinance change regarding annual passes as drafted. Driving by my house and shooting off an angry email is much closer to the definition of stalking than it is to due diligence. As the emails pointed out, election season is upon us. I would encourage everyone who chooses to participate in the political process, which I do hope is everyone, to do so with respect and common sense. Change begins at home. If we can't have a respectful discourse with our neighbors, there is little hope for it to happen on a broader scale."
Thank you. Councilmember Patterson?
Thank you. Planning commission will meet the 25th at, uh, 7:00 PM here in chambers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Guyser?
That's you.
I have no comment.
No communications, sorry.
Mr. Christ?
Thank you, Mayor, no report tonight.
I'm going to be brief.
Sorry, can we thank the Boy Scout too for?
Yeah.
And his dad, I get up early. I can't see him behind Sean.
Yeah. Way to go. Way to stay till the bitter end. I just want to take a moment, um, to recognize our assistant to the city manager, Charlena Stevenson, communications director Flora, and election specialist Amy Bessler for all their hard work and planning that, that they put into the volunteer luncheon. It was, it was, yes. I could see how thoughtful all three of you were and probably there was more support from other members of staff that I am unaware of, but the thoughtfulness with which you approached this event and really wanting to create something that was truly special and meaningful for all of our volunteers, um, it did not go unnoticed, so I thank you very much, um, for that. And this just kind of juxtaposed with the, uh, improvement, approvals of, um, boards and commissions, um, it just makes sense to mention that too. And to reiterate that, anyone who is giving of their time and their talent, their expertise to benefit our city, um, is a plus to my book. Um, all of the initiatives, the events and opportunities that we have in Berkeley are there because of a dedicated group of volunteers and a dedicated group of resident volunteers, I should add, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I am grateful that you've chosen to spend your time bettering your city. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Patterson and Valani. Ms. Patterson, will you please call the roll?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Uh, yes. I almost, yes.
Black?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The Monday, June 17th, 24, and the city council is adjourned.